Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special board meeting, which is our budget work session of Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. You all have me this evening leading the meeting because our president is on travel. And if there was any meeting that I was going to lead, this is the most joyful one because it's one of my favorite meetings that we have all year. Absolutely love the budget process and love that we have all the minds at the table, our fiscal committee, our staff, our board members, all sharing all of their ideas and wish list items for our next budget cycle. So excited we all are getting together this evening. With that, I will ask for, I think we have quorum, we have five of our board members here, we have a couple that I know are going to be showing up a little late this evening. Oh, no, we have Trevor already online, so we have six of our board members here. And we have three of our fiscal committee members here in the room, and it looks like one, two, three that are also online. So welcome, everyone. And with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask that we approve the agenda.
Just move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand online so I can see. We're approving the agenda for those online. Trevor and Lori, if you want to raise your hand even to let me know that you're okay with the agenda.
Just wanted to do a quick mic check to see if folks could hear me.
Yes, so we can hear you.
I can hear you, Trevor.
And you're both, you're both a yes on approving the agenda?
Yes.
Can you raise your hand at least? Can I, I need to know if you approve the agenda, Trevor and Lori.
I'm seeing a participant on my screen marked as Larry Butler. Perhaps that could be updated? Yeah? Is that someone else?
You have to unmute us, Brittany, I think. I don't think they can hear us. Okay. Sorry about that, we were muted in the room, so you were not hearing me. So I called the meeting to order, and right now we're approving the agenda. So Trevor and Lori, if you could let me know if you're okay with the agenda?
I agree.
Perfect. So that is unanimous. And with that, we will move to member comments. And Brittany usually takes a list for us of those that pre-registered.
I don't have anyone registered for member comments, but if there's anyone in the room who'd like to make a member comment, please state your name and your address for the record.
Lisa Turkeltal, 2508 Pinocle Lane. For member comments, I'd like to talk about, I submitted member budget comments through the online portal late. It was late, but it accepted my comments. But I saw that they didn't make it into the package, so it kind of implies that there was maybe a cutoff date or something. I don't know if other members submitted comments late because that forum was open for, I guess, quite a while. So hopefully it comes out like what happened to those member comments that were submitted late. And my comments were related, and I think it's applicable today, specifically for the tot lots. So I had a couple of comments regarding the tot lots and that the tot lots around Reston Association are stuck in 1975. They don't look like they have been updated with modern equipment, modern may something for climbing, and they're not really usable once you are a family with two toddlers and not an infant because most of those tot, most of those tot lots have one's wing for an infant and one's wing for an older child, and that's it. And there's a lot of these, and when I had little kids, we used these all the time, but they're really just not usable. It'd be great to see some updates to those tot lots. It'd be great to see some modern climbing equipment in some of those tot lots and just make them more accessible and usable for our children and our younger population. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online or in the room that would like to make a member comment? Okay, well, with that, we will move to our next agenda item, which is really the heart of our session, and I'll turn it over to our CEO, Matt Cummings, to lead us in our budget work session.
Thank you, Jennifer. It's good to be here tonight. This is actually my first August budget session as well. Some of the board members will recall from last summer, I moved here the week after this just because of the timing of needing to leave the West Coast and my daughter starting school, which everyone knows starts next week. So that means I'm actually hitting one year on the button here at the end of the week, sometime Friday or Saturday here at RA. So it's pretty exciting to be back with you all this evening. I just want to make a few brief introductory comments. Hopefully, the information and the materials that we gave everybody here this evening laid out the agenda, but I want to just sort of walk through the, what we are going to talk about tonight, what we're not going to talk about tonight, and then what's coming for you all in September, and then frankly, October as well. There are some pieces in the budgetary process that are still moving, and we are still pricing some things out. The main intent, and we can start to pull up the PowerPoint, the main intent of tonight's work-study session between both the fiscal committee and the board, from my perspective, is to hone in on the last of the remaining variables and give direction to myself and the staff on the things that you're most interested in us pricing out for consideration into the budget. So if everybody recalls, when we started this process in May, we talked about looking at the largest universe potential things that we may want to fund in the '24 and '25 budgets, and then eventually starting to whittle down. So in the May study session, we talked a lot about values and value systems and what we wanted the budget to focus on. If we pull up that first slide, we talked in May about budget policy and what that would look like. We talked a lot about wanting to be member-focused as compared to other forms of revenue, or thinking about what kinds of value you get in the base assessment and what that really looks like. So we had suggested, and the board rallied around at that time, really setting three budget policies, if you will. The first, of course, being member-focused. So when you see my first draft budget for you all in September, and we look at service delivery models, programming, different things that we offer the membership, we're going to place a very high priority around making sure that all of the things that we're doing are meeting or exceeding levels for those members. And we'll talk a little bit about the role of revenue and the expenditures when you actually see the draft budget. But all the work I'm doing with the SLT right now is focused around the members, not looking at, as in years past, potentially looking at, not that this should be a dirty word, but non-assessment revenue. We were, we were hyper-focused this year on member-facing things. The board may recall at the, at the last study session we had on this, we talked about achieving the same level of service. We had a fairly robust discussion, and there was a request at that time to set a policy of looking at the same or improved level of service. So we've adopted that policy priority for this process, and that's why you see that language here. And then the last one, setting expectations and metrics. So one of my observations when I was looking through a bunch of the budget documents and financials last summer was there wasn't a real good narrative around how the money was being spent and what services were being rendered for those expenditures. So what we're looking to do is, as we hone in on key performance indicators and expectations in the community by different cost center, creating that narrative and going back to something that looks like the budget books from years ago, but are much easier to read and understand than a series of spreadsheets, you know, or balance sheets or other sorts of things. So we'll be walking through what that same or improved level of service is when we actually present the first budget, and then putting words to all of that when we finally get to the adoption. So what we're going to do tonight, there are five topical areas that I want to hit with all of you and make sure that we come to some understanding or direction so that I have the final list of variables to put into the budget. Things we're not going to talk about tonight, I sort of listed off in paragraph form, I'm working on inflationary factors, I'm taking a look at what our staff attrition rate has looked like and what the merit pool might need to look like. I am looking at the staffing model. You may recall early on, we talked a little bit about zero-based budgeting. There will be some swap outs, you know, in staffing. I've already had some conversations with the board of some new services that they're looking for, and so therefore, you know, we'll probably be looking at some reductions in staffing and some additions in staffing to achieve a new service model along the lines of some of those services we've been talking about. And then, and probably the other big thing, I think budgetarily, is we're looking at truing up a number of both the revenue streams and the...
Recording stopped.
I did not do that. Are we good, Sean?
Recording in progress.
So some questions have come up in the past, especially around some of the revenue streams. If we continually outperform our budgeted revenue, should we true that up to be more realistic? Do we believe the business model is there? And globally, the answer to that question is yes, but maybe not every single line item. So when we get to an actual budget, we'll show you all where we've trued some of those things up. That will, of course, find some additional, you know, money in the budget. Not to suggest we get on a spending spree, but we are trying to create a realistic budget so we're not running quite as hefty a surplus. The lion's share of our surplus really has been in staff salary savings because of some unfilled positions, but, but it is true as well that we can do some truing up. So those things we're not going to be talking about tonight, I just wanted everyone to know that we're doing that work, and I've been working on that with the SLT. So when you see the draft budget, we'll give you a narrative explanation of that, and then, of course, be able to answer any questions at that time in September. So the five areas for tonight, looking for direction from the member comments. And when I say direction, it's not put it in budget or don't put it in the budget, it's do you want us to price this out? So we tried to put rough numbers, so you had some order of magnitude, is this hundreds of thousands of dollars or tens of thousands of dollars or de minimis, so you could have some idea when you're, you're talking about these things with us. At the end of that section, I'm really just looking for, are there five or seven things you'd like us to go price out? We got plus or minus, you know, 40, and I apologize, Lisa, I wasn't aware that maybe something had come in that didn't get from the computer portal to the website. I think that was definitely a small number, but I appreciate it happened to you, so we'll take a look at that. So we've got that part, and then you may all recall, I asked the board if you had specific individual board member suggestions to please get those to me no later than August 1st. The intent of that was not to have any kind of last-minute surprises, especially on the capital side, to price something out in October that has a significant impact to the assessment. We didn't get a whole lot, but we did get a few, so we'll talk about that section tonight. And then the CIP itself, and we'll talk about the narrative of the CIP and how that fits with a series of other programmatic things. And then I thought the pool pass discussion and kind of the what you get for your, your base assessment was a large enough discussion that I just created that as its own standalone item, and the financial part of that, I think we really need to kind of hash through, especially if there's interest in a bleed-in strategy so it doesn't hit the assessment all at once. And then the last piece, because of the issues around the buy-down or using one-time money to sort of artificially mask the cost of service to the community, I'd really like to have a deliberate conversation about that and/or if there's interest in some sort of status quo or contraction budget, we just have not talked about that at all. And I just don't want to be behind the eight ball if, if there's an expectation that that's going to come, because I'm really focused on the services that the board or the community's been asking for to date. So what I'm hoping to do tonight is take those in order, and we're going to stop and ask and answer the questions that I put in the packet and sort of not move to the next section, at least until I'm clear, and I'll probably read back to you, here's what I heard, just so we can make sure we deliver in September if that sounds okay with everybody. So I think we'll start with members' suggestions, and let me just...
Can I just pause you right there?
Yeah.
Because I think this is a really important slide, and we didn't have the fiscal committee at the table with us at the May meeting, although we, I know Dave invited them to attend. But I want to make sure, because I think these three budget priorities will live through us, live with us throughout this budget process. So I want to make sure that there are no final comments, final tweaks, and that we, you know, suggestions, and that these are the three that Mac's going to use with staff to kind of guide their development of the budget. So I'd like people to make sure that we're speaking up if, if there's something else or there's a tweak that you think we should be making to them. Yes. Oh, right, yes.
At some, either earlier or later point in your presentation, you have five areas that you wanted to cover, and one of those is environmental, which I'm not sure how you fit it in within these priorities, but I assume that because you do mention it is, it is considered and will be considered as part of the budget as it may arise and talk of what it's decided to do.
It's a good question, Irwin. The way that, that would be a programmatic service that we currently offer in a couple of different ways. So we have some environmental services that are, exist in our maintenance group, and then we're, we're going to be hiring a director of environmental. Those things fall within the achieving the same or improved level of service. If the board wanted to expand that in some way, that it would fit within that goal as compared to something completely brand-new, you know, that we've never offered.
Never done before.
Yeah, well, I had made some specific suggestions or recommendations for environmental-related matters, and I assume that that will be gone through, and we will talk about those later on this evening.
Yeah, those show up in the board member suggested specific items for pricing down.
Okay.
So it sounds like core service operations is where the environmental piece, so it, it sounds like it's part of our goals. Anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, then we'll use this as our start.
Okay.
Within the budget process.
All right, so jumping forward to the members' suggestions, there were about 40 of those. Should have received all of those in your packet. What we did to try to organize night's conversation was put them into tiers based on these budget policy things. So roughly half of them fit within the, one of those three categories you see on the screen. The rest did not. And so I gave them to you so you could see them all, but assumed that you would want to organize a conversation around the highest priority items for your budget policy. And then I thought, rather than having, say, 20 and what might be a 52-card pickup exercise amongst a lot of people, I thought I would take a run at making some suggestions for you all, some that are really member-facing, and we'll go and flip to the next slide. Things like, it's come up at the IT committee actually multiple times around, should we be looking at an app right now, or should we be doing that, you know, in the future? Things like, hey, maybe we should do some, some things like, you know, get the ice, you know, out there and placing sand, e-cycling, more trees, those sorts of things. If you actually go through the 20 or so, many of them we're already doing, there were some operational things in there that, that we're already implementing, and again, happy to answer any questions on those. Some didn't seem to be as big a bang for the buck, especially around something like a, you know, a mobile app. So these were the ones I was suggesting you all take a look at, and we could price further. But that's by no means to say if you have ideas from the other tier-one things. What I'm really looking for from you all, though, is, like, we'll go look at these five or seven. If we go price out 20 or 25, the list of variables for me in creating the budget gets really unwieldy to create the first budget, and it's even harder to, to whittle down, especially as you're all looking at O and M things and program things and revenue streams and all the other stuff. So we're suggesting those five as a starting place. If there's concurrence, great. If you want to suggest one of the other tier-one things, this was our blush at it from a staff standpoint. So I'll just sort of stop there and hand it back to Jennifer, you know, and see how you guys want to go about talking about this year's member comments.
I would say if anyone has any comments on any of the five that we're seeing, or any of the 35-ish that are not on this slide that you'd like to see added, I'm happy to take those comments. Or maybe there's members out there you've heard from that you feel those should be added into consideration. And it looks like we have Trevor and then Jalal. So Trevor, you're, you're up first.
Thank you. So one question I had was on some of the pricing. The first one I had was, there was a member comment on litter, and in our, in the pricing estimation that was included in the spreadsheet, it said that there would be little to no impact on the budget. And I was wondering, I guess, kind of how we might have come to that conclusion, and if we were to increase services around a litter pickup or patrolling of pathways specifically focused on trash, you know, what, there would seem there would have to be either greater staff involvement, additional hours, some sort of budgetary expense there, and I was just wondering what kind of went into the thought process potentially for, for that being zero.
Sure. Trevor, this is Pete. Thank you for the question. When we were going through member comments, what we really tried to focus on was making sure that not every comment...
And then I can't hear the room right now because the room might be on mute, so I'll take this opportunity to throw out one other question. The hosting of an e-cycling and shredding event for RA membership, I did not see that. I was looking through the comments, I wasn't able to find that specifically. If someone could please explain to me what type of event that is? I guess I'm less familiar with the term shredding, so would be all ears on, just trying to learn a little bit more about what, what that actually is.
Hey, Trevor, this is Pete Luss. Can you, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
So let me go backwards. I'll start with the e-cycling and shredding event, that was a member comment that came through that we thought would be more of a member-focused event that would be focused on folks here in Reston. We did assign, I think, a $5,000 to $10,000 range for bringing that event to Reston. It is something that Fairfax County does, you can e-cycle through the county, there are various shredding agencies as well, but just something we thought would be a nice idea to bring in once a year. I've experienced it, people love it, you'll be surprised the amount of tube TVs that are out there, but it's a $5,000 to $10,000 event that we could probably bring to Reston, and the hardest part, obviously, honestly, is finding a place to do it. The traffic, the way it typically works is a, it's like a drive-through event, people cycle through, so just finding the place to do it would be, would be somewhat difficult. But from a cost perspective, we threw a $5,000 to $10,000 number there. To go back to the litter comment, Mac and I were kind of careful when we went through sort of line by line to make sure we weren't assigning necessarily a dollar number to everything, mainly because, you know, from a litter perspective, some of that could be a PR campaign for, for members, some of it could be getting our staff out, maybe just a little bit more than they are now. I, we, we thought it was more responsible to think about it more from a staffing workload perspective than maybe just adding more staff because someone said there might be too much litter. So it might not necessarily be that we don't need more people, but we thought maybe it's a, it's an operational thing for right now.
Understood. Thank you, Peter.
Mike, I have a couple of questions. They might sound process-oriented, but the purpose of asking these questions is I think it's important for the membership to understand how you operate and how you come up with the priorities and how you came up with this list as a way of describing that. With that in mind, when I look at the five areas that you've identified, whoops, can you share how, what sort of process you used, how you came up with the priorities, how did you select those? Were they tied, for example, to the survey if it was completed, if you saw the results? I know you get member inputs. And very specifically to item number one, I think a lot of members have complained about the website, and this is not something new, everybody knows about that. So when you look at the mobile app, are you in any way tying that to revamping the website to make it easier for the members when it comes to the use of the website, or is it just a mobile? So two-part question.
Yeah, I think, so here's how the, the process went. So there was, I can't remember the exact number when we tiered them, you know, into the top tier, they met the budget policy priorities, roughly 20, let's say. There were probably five or seven that we're already doing, there's some internal operational, you know, things around work schedules and, and some things that are already happening. And then Peter and I sat down and looked at, let's say, the other 15 and said, well, what are the things we're hearing in the community? What's the biggest bang for the buck? You know, what could we do and probably frankly, maybe be able to just find the money, you know, and just do something, especially these $5,000 to $10,000 items? So that's what we did. That's how we landed on those five. The, the one that I think was most interesting to me was the mobile app. It's something that has come up quite a bit. People have told us things like, it's hard to know exactly where all the trail systems go. How come we don't have something that everybody's phone could automatically go to? One of the things I'm very fond of saying, I'm sure you've all heard me say, is just don't make it hard for people to give you their money, you know, and a lot of people pay for things, especially incidentals, you know, by, by app now. This is a concept that has come up several times in relation to the website and then separate from the website. I don't think there's any question that it was going to come up as a phase two, like the website needs to be up and running as a portal to, to see and do business with RA. I think the question is, should we start pricing it now and think about it as a potential '24 thing, or push it back to '25 and not fund it? It's definitely getting discussed, though, out in the community.
Go ahead. Thanks. So on that same note, when you discussed the mobile app internally, did you have the conversation with the IT committee? Did you consider their, the work plan they had laid out?
No, not yet. I mean, this is super preliminary. If the board wasn't even interested in exploring it, we hadn't put that out there yet.
Okay.
And we hadn't even thought about potential O and M monies that would come with it. I mean, these were simply on an order of magnitude, this is hundreds of thousands, not a $5,000 item.
Yeah, yeah. I would just suggest that if we're going, if we do decide to move forward, it's something that we should really tie closely to the IT committee's work plan, because as you mentioned, you know, they're in the midst of not just revamping the website and to, to pound this, to beat this, this force again, the website revamp isn't just a website revamp, it's an entire backend data revamp. So it's going to take some time to get the, get our data house in order before we're ready to build a mobile app, in my opinion. So I would suggest that we spend some time really thinking about that.
I was just going to ask, since it's been a while since I looked at the survey, does the survey address how people interact with RA regularly, you know, like email, telephone conversations and so on? Because that's where I would, rather than get kind of anecdotal, yes, I want an app so I can, you know, trap on the, on the trails, how many people actually would use phones?
Yeah, I, I don't recall, and I don't think we could probably mine exactly, I know exactly what you'd probably be looking for. It would probably still even be anecdotal, because what the, we were really after with the survey was capital facilities, usage, and wants and needs in the future as compared to just a general interacting with RA.
Okay. You want to go ahead?
Okay. So let me say Dave Currie, then you...
The first question I wrote down when I saw this was, so what, do we have a current end date for a new website up and running?
Yes.
I don't know what that is.
Yeah, first quarter, generally speaking. So we're moving into the selection right now, and there's a selection committee made up of some IT committee members and some of our staff. So the board would then ultimately decide and then start building and, and be up and running by the early part of next year.
So April, we think we're up and running on a new website?
Yes, although I think it's a phased approach when we say the website. But yes, a new website that doesn't look like what you see up there.
Oh, believe me, I agree. This is the most important thing. I just think that, you know, a mobile app, by the way, I'm not sure it's a mobile app. It's at least two, right? They're very expensive. You've got to have the website in place first, and I would, I would put this out of ways. Pricing, that's great, I mean, figure it out, because there's a lot of work to do there. The maintenance of an app is pretty expensive, too. So, but I just think '24 may be a little premature to be mobiling. Great idea, but maybe early.
I think from a, from a, from a cost and spend perspective, we have to fix what we have first before we can engage in adding onto it. And so I think we need to wait until the new website is delivered and the WebTrack and that integration, or however that looks, is significantly improved, because, I mean, WebTrack is so challenging as well. And so once those two things are, those things are essential services for the operations of the association, we use them all the time to interact. And so I, I think that my recommendation would be that this is not considered for the budget, because I just don't, I think it's premature. I think maybe we table it for after those other two things are delivered.
I just want to be clear about what you're saying in terms of not for the budget, are you referring to '24 or '25, because this is a two-year budget for, for after that?
I, I think we need to, we've been reviewing the budget every year, so I don't know how much of a review we'll do next year, but I think it just should be, if you look at the workload that needs to happen, I think it should just be tabled from this whole cycle consideration until we meet, achieve the milestones that have already been established technology-wise. Once we achieve and show that we can demonstrate significant service improvement based on the project plans that are there, we can entertain spending a quarter million dollars on the next project, but to entertain that now just seems not a great way to spend dollars.
Pass.
You're up.
We already discussed, pass.
Oh, pass, I didn't hear you say pass. Any, anyone else? Oh, Trevor, I see your hand.
So I would just like to commend kind of Mac for, for being a little bit more forward-thinking on this app. I think, especially with where we are in the stage of the budget, if he is allotting anywhere from five to seven items to be reviewed, to be priced... commend kind of Mac for, for being a little bit more forward-thinking on this app. I think, especially with where we are in the stage of the budget, if he is allotting anywhere from five to seven items to be reviewed, to be priced out and to be evaluated, doesn't mean they go into the budget, doesn't mean we have to take them seriously for 2024. It just means that we have an opportunity to see what this might cost. And to Earl's point, maybe start the process on the backend of a two-year budget cycle. So I, I think this is a smart thing to look into because especially if we're, if some of these things, which are important, but we don't have to spend a lot of time assessing how much it costs to treat, to, to plant trees. There's a general range there and we, we do this every year regardless. So we have a good idea of what that is. I don't, I don't think that's going to take too much time for staff, but a significant expenditure like a mobile app that could, in theory, actually provide real revenue generating member assessment fees, I just, I think it's smart to look at in the early stages of a cycle and then we can choose what to do with it when we get to September. As far as the the member comment regarding pool use in non-summer season periods, I believe the, the comment was, was targeted around removing pool use in the session one and session five areas and consolidating our effort down to two through four, which would be your primary Memorial Day to Labor Day summer window. The pricing estimate that the staff put together was 140K to 175K. And I just wanted to clarify if that was just a pure, if we extend all, basically extend hours at our core pools, open all pools during that timeframe and really hone in our staff for that window, that's how much it would cost without considering the savings that we would get on the front end and the backend of those closures? Or if everything was included in, in that pricing estimate?
So Trevor, this is Pete, and that, that was just an initial estimate at, at staff materials, things to keep the pools open longer. We were looking tonight for maybe a little bit more direction on that. And if that's something the board is interested in discussing, we could certainly come back with a more detailed estimate, but that was sort of a rough order of magnitude.
And I think that that is on the list to have a discussion on outside of this, the member suggestions piece, right, Mac? Tonight? Isn't that one of the items?
I think Trevor's specifically referencing a suggestion to change the, when, later on, we're talking about the past sales and whether you should be able to access the pools as part of your base assessment and tennis or racket sports. And we were sort of basing that conversation on keeping the same hours we do now. Because if you start doing all those variables, now you get, it's three-dimensional.
Right, right.
So again, certainly, the purpose of tonight is to price things out, you know, not make final decisions. I mean, obviously, if you know you're not interested in something at all, it's good to know that and not to price it out. The, the issue that I see, there, there are a lot of people that talk to us about wanting pools to stay open later, more routinely. It hasn't been quite as hot this year, and I know that because last year I felt like I landed on the face of the sun. So I understood why everyone wanted the pools to stay open later. We only have two pools that are heated, which means if we're open, it has to be those two pools, particularly before Memorial Day. The water's just not warm enough from, from natural ambient temperature. And there are a lot of lap swimmers and exercise swimmers and people that are interested, you know, in that. So it could be a budgetary thing. I'm kind of looking at the screen now for you, Trevor. We're happy to take a look at it. If there's a desire to, I'll just throw out there, there's definitely some policy there that will come back for the board about usage and who those user groups are and their expectations and that sort of thing.
I think it would be an interesting pricing exercise to see, to see if we, because staffing the pool is so much more challenging to do before the school year really comes to a close. So that period one is a real challenge for us anyway, just as much as period five is after the school year begins. So seeing, seeing what that number looked like, again, I think it's just a nice educational piece. I, I have no, I'm not advocating for, for that to necessarily happen right away, but it's, it would be a, if we could get to an item number six or item number seven for the staff to price out, and nobody else has any other suggestions that they are desperately looking to see in this year's 2024, 2025 budget, it would, I think it would be interesting to see if we were to open at Memorial Day, but stay open later through session five, if we were to, or if we're just to not open on session, or not, not be open for business on sessions one and five, what that pricing increase or savings, you know, would be.
I just wanted to, not to get too wrapped around the web app axle, but I, just to push back a little bit on what Trevor was saying, we don't have nearly enough data to even start pricing the, the building web app because we don't know what we're going to need in the backend. So rather than be, you know, circumspect as I was before, I'll be a bit more direct this time. I think it's not a good idea to consider it now. And it's better to wait until we've, you know, as, as Lisa said, met all, met the milestones, we're, are close to meeting all of the milestones that we've laid out for the website, multiple phases of the website, and then start to look at growth. Because I agree that that's where we should be. It would be fantastic if we could be, you know, dragged kicking and screaming into the 21st century. But I think we've got a little bit more to do before we can get there. Something, though, I did want to commend you on is making the Shadowwood Pool name change number two on the priority list. I think that's fantastic. And I think that people in that community are going to be really excited about that.
Yes.
Another process-related question for you. So you have listed five in there. Is it a heavy lift to include additional items and maybe take this up to 10? Or something like that? And this is not to create more work for you, but I think I would say it is extremely helpful for everybody, the board and the members, to see the list and get an idea of the cost associated with those things before you even try to prioritize things. I think it would help people appreciate these are the needs, this is what people are asking, and this is the cost associated with that. I think it helps people kind of put things in context rather than just.
So yeah, process coordinator. The, so tonight, we're only talking about the member suggestions. And there are a series of other things that I'm going to suggest for the board based on the service model of what, all the different things that RA does and what it takes to do there. In terms of being responsive to the members, you know, members that take the time to put something in, it's good to have a deliberate discussion. So tonight, we're really saying, hey, yeah, thanks for the 40 suggestions we got. These are the ones we're interested in having the staff price out. And then it's undoubtedly going to be true that you're all going to whittle down from whatever you tell me tonight to whatever the final number is.
Are you saying that you will end up pricing all 40?
No. Well, we've given, we've given you a rough order of magnitude. In terms of the number, it would be better for me from a, just from a pricing standpoint, and of course, there's an order of magnitude here. But I think we were hoping to keep it to five to seven so we don't get too many variables, especially when one impacts something else. The fiscal committee is doing if-then gyrations, trying to work on the revenue versus expenditure analysis. So like, we talk about, let's say, the pool thing gets added, as Trevor was just suggesting, and the mobile app comes off. Like, there's one very big, heavy lift analysis, but another one went off. If all five of them are, price them all out in the hundreds of thousands of dollars and they all interrelate, that's a way bigger thing than if there's eight and some of them are, you know, let's talk about trail maintenance, you know, more profoundly when we get to the CIP. Does that make sense? So I'm not, I'm fixated on the numbers so much as I want to make sure I deliver a budget that we deliberately thought about. So at some point, you've got to start whittling down.
Yep. No, I agree. It goes back to my first question about process, the priorities. How do you decide the priorities? What, what objective are you going after? Is it budget? Is it revenue? Is it member requests? Is it future stuff and so on? And I will just finish by saying one more thing since I brought up the mobile app first and so on. Generally speaking, in the industry, websites are developed first. And then after that, they look at, you know, from a technology perspective, what's inside, what's outside, and they, they sort of how to turn that into an app. So I, again, I, I just want to make sure that we all understand that it might sound good to have a, an app, but I think we might be putting the horse before the cart here. Just, just my suggestion. Thank you.
I'd just like to respond to a couple of the comments that were made. So this year, a lot of work has gone into presenting us with a package that has guiding principles. And I think as we're all making our comments, at the, at the beginning of the meeting, we agreed to accept the three main principles on here, which are improved level of service or enhanced service or keeping service as is. So as we look at members' comments, the one that Trevor brought up was reducing services. So it goes against the principles that we agreed at the beginning of the meeting. We're part of this budget process. I, I think that we should, unless people want to reopen what the budget process should be on here, I really think that we need to be at a macro level and respect the work that staff has done coming up to this level and say, we all agree, everyone in this room, no one had an objection that we should keep service level the same. So I, I don't think we should be putting anything on that list that is to reduce service level at this point in time for this conversation. If, if the board asks for a reduced budget, which I think Mac is asking for direction on, if the board votes, yes, we want a reduced level of it, then surely they can go look at the members' comments and poll like, okay, we have a suggestion on how to reduce that budget. But I think for this conversation, we should keep it high-level macro, adhere to the principles that have been stated and trust. We can't dig into a micro level on every comment and kind of trust a little bit about what's being presented to us.
Trevor?
The way the member comment is phrased is that we have had a loss of service during the core summer months. And so we would be improving that service in our core summer months. I was a little thrown off by the price estimation of, through that improvement process, it would actually cost us more to do that since we would be eliminating services outside of those four months. So that was a little bit of my question, but.
Yeah, I think, I think there maybe might be a misunderstanding between correlation and causation. I'm not really sure that closing for one and five will directly impact the amount of benefit, increase in benefits being provided over the summer. Maybe they will, but I don't, I don't see a, a causation, cause and effect there. I think there might be maybe some assumptions there that we haven't seen any data on.
Okay, so I have a list. Shocker. Most of my list is kind of a repeat from the May meeting, so I want to make sure that they're still on the list because I didn't specifically email my list, but I, I basically gave most of my list at the May meeting. And then a couple on the member comments. So there's one on there about crosswalks. I know we're looking at the crosswalk at Barton Hill because we've talked about it. The, when we made the decision on Lake Throw Pool, there was a lot of members during that time that asked about that crosswalk, and it's still an issue. And so I just want to, there's a history there in addition to the comment you guys are seeing, and I just want to make sure that you're aware that it's more than just one member comment on that. Also, the comment, the member comment about looking at RA's facility and the future of what, what that looks like, I'm not sure if there would be a budget impact. But I think that it's worth researching to see if there would. You might be able to go out and get a broker to, to do that, that analysis for us without spending money. But I'm not, I'm not for sure. But between the SSPA process and getting, you know, how many years we're out from our lease, the SSPA process has this building as a potential, you know, change of use. And so that could put us out. So maybe not even 2024, but 2025 for sure. I think that we need to be thinking, what does that future look like here? And we might know a little bit more about the SSPA results by then. But if they do a change of use here, then this building could go away. And I don't want RA to be unprepared for what that might, might be. The change of the name of the, of Shadowwood Pool. I definitely think it's a project that we should take on. I'm just not sure that it's a project that we should budget for. I'm also not sure that it would be a big budget line item. But without knowing the direction that the board's going to go on it, I'd hate to earmark budget money when I think that if we, if we approve that name change, you know, say, next year, I'm pretty sure it's something not costly enough that we couldn't find the money somewhere. So I'm, I'm not trying to earmark money for something that the board hasn't made a decision on. And then I'm a big fan of land use, big surprise. I think there needs to be staff consulting, don't, but there needs to be some bucket somewhere where RA is, you know, prepared to use dollars to try to get new members, you know, respond to properties that might come up that we're interested in advocating for. And, and we might need some expertise there if it's not already built on, within staff. The mobile app, I'm, I'm a no on the mobile app. I'm probably a no indefinitely on the mobile app because HTML5 is so prevalent. And, you know, it, building a mobile app when you have HTML5 could be fairly cheap if you really wanted to do it. But apps are kind of on their way out and people are going on to websites. And as long as you're making that website, you know, user-friendly, it's, people tend to use that these days than apps. You know, I used to use the Macy's app five or six years ago or the Amazon app, and I just use the, I just go on Spire and use the website now. I just think the usage of the population has changed when it comes to apps. So I'm not sure that, that that would be worth the money that we might consume. And if, you know, we're going to build a mobile app, I would say it needs to be transactional, and that's probably why you're looking at a cost so high. But my, my instead consideration would be, I've heard the board talk about the future of IT and technology within the association. I'd rather I see a spend money on a consultant to give us a path or, you know, some type of idea of where our, our technology services are going. And maybe a mobile app would fit into that, but I'd, I'd like to see an overall plan instead of, of a mobile app or, or one, one specific technology. I saw the comment on North Reston footbridge. I'm, it was in North Reston. I'm honestly not familiar with that area. So I would defer to, you know, Chris and Max, Mike's team to tell us if that's a worthy area to put it or how much traffic they think goes there. But we do have a ton of footbridges. And that kind of goes along with paths, I think, for path improvements and and footbridges might be something that we should should take our list and figure out if there's, you know, so many of those that we want to do, both from a member service perspective, but also from a political perspective. I think it's important to show not only path maintenance, but that we're making some efforts towards connection points to other places. The nature center comment, I think it sounds like something got broken and needs to be fixed. I kind of feel like that's a maintenance issue, but I'm not familiar enough with it. But the nature center is very well-used. And so if there's something broken there, I would advocate for us, us fixing it. Or if we're not fixing it, if it's dated, then reinventing what that needs to be. In previous year's budgets, we talked about pruning of trees, and I didn't see that in member comments or, or on the slide deck, but we have a lot of mature trees and I saw a couple of comments about trees. I, I would just make sure that when we're building that maintenance budget, that we're making those considerations. Some of that staff cost because we have most of the equipment, but to make sure that that's part of the plan. A lot of these mature trees are blocking people's view when they're turning from one road to another. And we're seeing that at our pools, that the shading is causing a lot of debris in our pools. So as long as we're making sure that's part of the plan, I think will be good. Agree with Lisa's tot lot comment. We also had an idea a couple of years ago about adding, I think it was Larry and Laura who came up with it, at Nature Center, making like a wilderness playground experience. And there was somewhere that I read in the packet about a location for an ADA playground. Is that later? Is that later in the slide deck?
It's later on.
That's on the CIP one. Okay, so I'll hold that one for then. I have my two insurance ones that I know that you said you were working on, that was for my May list. I'm a big fan of extending pool hours or at least doing a presentation as part of the budget process of what that would look like so that members see that we're evaluating that and we're making active decisions related to it. We also talked at the May meeting about a non-member subscription model. And I thought that there was, there was a fair amount of agreement on the board that that's something that we should, we should look at. And so when you're doing a, you know, pricing out things, I was hoping that something like that would be on the list. I also made a comment about staff turnover and looking at what a conservative factor would be. There's a, there's a couple on here, and I will tell you, I've spent most of my time in the last two years on the RA board fielding member comments on pickleball. And I think that it's not just an RA issue, it's not just a Fairfax County issue, it's an across-the-nation issue. And, and I think that we need to do some research. And hopefully, I was hoping in September 6th, we have that meeting that we'd hear a little bit more about what that is. But I, I also sent an email to Lori the other day that I'm, I'm, I'm not in that district, but I'm hearing things from the people around Autumnwood again about the noise up there. And, and so it seems that we're having multiple comments on it and it should be something we research. And then I think, did I read in the packet that you are already doing some research on Budget for the Deed?
Yes.
So that was part of, that's just a normal.
Different memo. So I sent the board a memo with programs and things that I am pricing out.
Pricing, okay, so that's one of them. Okay, so I thought that that was included. And that's all I had.
So just so I can be clear, because I think there was some apples and oranges in there. Because you had some, I think, board member comments, we have a whole section on that, but.
Oh, later?
Yeah.
Sorry.
For the, the member.
That's all of mine, I'm done, I could go home right.
On the member comments, though, you hit a couple of things I think might be worth just following up on so everybody knows. So for example, on things like the sidewalks, right, or the safety, we have a CIP budget item just for trails, trail maintenance and trail improvements. One of the programmatic things we'll be doing next year is marrying the MTAC work that was on missing links or unsafe areas or all the different data that they had done. We're actually working with Walter Alcorn's office and the county staff because they have a different list and marrying those two things together. And then trying to prioritize and being much more deliberate on that. That was a lesson learned for me in the Barton Hill example as I went out and talked and then started asking our staff, well, we have all these lists, but we haven't necessarily compiled them and been deliberate about how we're prioritizing which are the most unsafe or should be fixed first or built first and so forth. And also looking for alternate funding streams. So there's also a whole safe route to school thing going on. But as it relates to member comments, we'll get a comment like that, it doesn't show up on a list. The reason is we're already doing it. Now, there's a budgetary potential thing, is the $30,000 we currently budget in that amount or in that line item, is that the wrong amount? So when I'm looking at the same or increased levels of service and I bring you a draft budget, I'll be able to explain, yeah, we're going to keep doing that. I don't think we can find the money this year to triple that one line item, for example. But that's why that kind of thing doesn't, didn't show up.
Didn't show up on this list, okay.
Yeah. And then things like the land use part, which kind of moved into the board member comments. That would be an example of something, especially for fiscal, you wouldn't know this. I've been talking to the board about new services that we may add. And land use is just one of those service areas. And so I still have a kind of spectrum of what that service might look like and therefore a spectrum of costs that would go with it. So I'm kind of pricing all that out as options for them as we move through the system. So what I'm actually hoping to do is, of the member comments, of those 40 things, I think I heard pretty clearly, now is not the right time to be spending a ton of time pricing out mobile app. I appreciate your comments, Trevor. On our annual thing, if we wanted to do this in '25, it's not like if we decide not to price this out tonight, that suddenly it's going to be '27 before we have a conversation, you know, about it. But I heard pretty clearly, now is not the right time. Totally understand, the members have asked for it, which is why I put it in front of you. The others, I think, are pretty straightforward. I think I did not necessarily hear, other than Trevor's suggestion, anything else out of the tier one list. What I'm actually looking for is, of the things here, which one should I price out? And again, they may or may not show up in the budget, but I need to have them for you if when you start doing the cafeteria menu, I want this, I don't want that, we've got it. So that's the direction I'm looking for tonight. I see Dan.
So can we potentially combine a comment I had with a comment that Jennifer had regarding pool hours? And potentially price out an assessment of what expanded pool hours would look like, as well as some creative ideas behind maximizing our staff usage in, in off-summer hours? So just a, it's, Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like you had a member, kind of member-driven comment around pool hours. And so if we're not doing the mobile application, Shadowwood is not, I agree with you, is not a high expense, regardless of if the board decides to go with it or not. Sand buckets, pretty, pretty small cost relative to the other things we're talking about here. And the tree planting, again, I think we have a pretty solid history of what that might cost RA if we were going to go down that route. So we really don't have anything yet from member comments that we're telling Mac and staff to pursue and look at at a more detailed level, especially if we take off mobile app. So that would be my suggestion.
If we're going to move on from this, I just want to, I do want to comment on hosting e-cycling and shredding, okay? Fairfax County does e-cycling. I think it's, I think it's available like all the time. You have to get in your car and you have to go there, okay? And shredding, you know, it's interesting, do a, do a query on shredding in Reston. There's, there's a half a dozen companies who do business, earn a living in Reston doing it. We shouldn't be in competition with those, we shouldn't be in the shredding business. So it's not a lot of money, but it's not money well-spent.
Lori?
I'm muted myself. So nothing new to add, but I did want to just reiterate and emphasize, as Jen brought up, that when I hear from my members, it's often about pickleball noise, particularly at Autumnwood, and also about pool hours. And, and I, while I recognize the difficulty of expanding pool hours, my daughter was a lifeguard, so I was aware during that time of how difficult it was to staff those positions, particularly early and late, but even in the height of the season, that it remains a challenge and yet it's a service that our members value and would like to see us do better on. So I agree that those need to be areas where we focus some energy in trying to cost out what different improvement options are out there and what would they cost? Achieving those may be difficult because as we know, hiring to fill positions that we have funded and advertised is not always something that we can count on. I did want to just also endorse that I do hear also from the members in my North Point District about the need for trail improvement. So I'm glad that when we get to the capital improvement budget and we can look at the $30,000 that are already targeted for that and decide whether or not there needs to be any kind of adjustment to that number. Those are the things that I do hear from the folks who speak to me. Thanks. Oh, and also, I also agree that getting the website up and functioning the way a website should be for an organization of our size and of our magnitude, just in terms of what people need to do with us. Getting the website working is absolutely high priority and, and much more important than getting diverted with a web, with an app. Because if we get the website working, I don't think we'll hear a lot of people asking for an app. I certainly have not. Thanks.
If we're serious about moving forward with pool hours exploration, I would just like to say that I think it needs to be unbiased to any one specific generational group because we are a multi-generational association. And what tends to have happened in the three years that I've been on the Finance Committee is the pool hour conversation is always geared to one specific generational group at a time. And I would be looking for a cohesive plan that meets all generations. Hey, this group of people wants earlier hours, this group of people wants later hours. Here's how we explored that and here's a solution or recommendation that we came in. I think any kind of exploration needs to be multi-generational.
So the way we handled this last year, we set aside $30,000 in the budget and then asked Laura Kowalski and team to ask and answer some of those questions and what could be done for that $30,000. We'll have a report for you all, but not until we actually get to the extended hours, which are really just starting right now as we move into the, you know, the new season. To, to look at pricing out additional hours in the summertime is, is not the most difficult challenge. It's typically labor-related kinds of things. Obviously, there's a, can we get the lifeguards kind of conversation and other things? You know, it's the end of season and beginning of the season when labor shortage occurs because of people being back, back at school and/or the, the pump, I mean, there's a, I mean, pump, heater issue. But there's a desire to want to continue to expand that program. The pricing part of it, which is really all we're doing now, the budgetary part, that, that's probably not the hardest exercise. What we do with the money, what we did this time was, we came back to the board and says, here's how we're going to spend the money, we're going to keep these pools open X number of, you know, hours later. And it was based on some of the factors you're describing. But of course, it wasn't the entire universe because it was $30,000. But we'd be happy to do that again if you're all seeing aquatics as being something that you want to potentially focus on and have us price out. Not to decide yet, but do we want to put extra money? And we can talk about usage, what we know about usage, once we get into this last season and wasn't successful. The 30K we're spending this year, well before we make the final budget decision.
Since, since pools are the most expensive amenity that we own and operate, I think that would be a very useful exercise to go through, even though, and particularly as Dave Curves pointed out many times, that since at least 2016, pool usage has begun to decline and that coincided with a shortening of pool hours. So if, if we can do things differently or more efficiently, get people to use it, it won't decrease the expense of operating the pools, but it will certainly improve member attitude.
All right, how about I make this suggestion because we've got four, four more topical areas to go? I think what I clearly heard is, let's not price out the mobile app now. Let's take another look at pool hours and potentially either be more efficient the way Bob just threw out there or expand hours, just an outright expansion, and see what those potential cost numbers would be. And I, I'll have that, all those things ready for the, the first budget.
May I add one more thing? So I do recall that one of the items in, in the list was removing dead trees and so on and so on. I know that sounds kind of open-ended, maybe the scope is not that clear. But I just want to submit to you that because of the way the weather is changing, I expect us in the future to get more storms in the area. The amount of rain this year has been a good sample of what, a sample of things to come. I think from a future-leaning perspective, we need to be aware, think about those from a resilience perspective. These dead trees not only cover the pathways or the trails, they're a liability, they're a hazard. And we don't want to get in the future in a situation where something bad happens and then we say, oh my God, what do we do now? I know that request was in there and it was sort of, the scope was very wide. I would suggest very strongly that you consider, think about at least what it takes to do something like that. I think that's a worthwhile activity, thinking about the future.
Maybe we change number five from tree planting to like a more holistic approach to what we should be doing with trees? Like is it removing, is it pruning, is it planting? Is it getting rid of invasive species in certain areas? So maybe it's more holistic. Go ahead, Lori. Oh, she was clapping.
I was just going to close, I was just going to close by saying, my concern is more from the higher-level perspective of what hazards, what liabilities we'll have to bear if something bad happens.
Maybe what we can do, we'll speak to that because we, we have some money set aside for that and we do staff for those things. The typical questions we get are, can you come take down my tree? Not an RA tree that might be dead or causing a problem, or a cluster tree, that happens frequently. Sometimes there's disagreements about whether or not the tree is actually dead or not. And as soon as we take down a live tree, there'll be an army of people down wanting to know why that happened. But the point's well-taken. How about as part of our budgetary presentation, Pete and Mike Mac, we'll just give an explanation of kind of what's in those line items now and agree with Jennifer. Things like invasive species are coming up a lot, it's coming up at EAC too. So we should all get on the same page about exactly what we are doing and how we're doing it. And then we can talk about expansion if you want.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to the board member suggestions. The three suggestions that I put out there, these actually came in through member suggestions, notwithstanding a few of the things like Jennifer was mentioning that show up, you know, in other places. These are environmental-specific and really, all I'm looking for is, do you want me to move forward in pricing those? And just one comment, because you'll see one that speaks to electric leaf blowers. I don't know if everybody's aware, we purchased an electric leaf blower as part of a pilot program to see how it works, see how the charging works, see if it's powerful enough, see how it lasts through a season. We're not to the fall yet, so of course, we haven't gotten to the busy season really for leaf stuff. But I just want everyone to be aware of that. So some of that could feed into future budgetary decisions as well. These came from Earl Wood, so I'm sure he's going to want to speak to them.
The first one you have listed there is actually a combination of two, and the first one got cut off. It is contained in the member comments also more completely. And what I would suggest to modify it and make it more likely to be undertaken is that we not try to jump into a conversion of the fleet into electric vehicles completely each year as they are replaced. But start out perhaps in the first, perhaps in '25. After having done a study as to what it means, replace some vehicles to get an experience with them and an experience with installation of the charging facilities necessary to underpin their operation. And so that would reduce the amount of effort and also the amount of expenditure that would result ultimately until the CSF people get experience with the electric vehicles and understand what their operation means and the recharging and whole system. And that would give us a better base for moving forward in further budget years in the future. So if you could do that, I think it would satisfy the basic understanding of the simplification of maintenance for vehicles, the more efficient use of the vehicles, and a better service, actually. The second thing is the exploration of alternate sources of electricity. That's staff time, it doesn't require anything further. And it might result also in a lower end of price. There are, I heard several years ago that for municipalities, Dominion does provide a lower price rate. That was never followed through, I made the suggestion to that executive director and it came at a bad time and it just fell through the cracks. And I think that it would be good to explore that and see whether we could qualify for that. And it would lower the rate for all of our electrical expenditures. The other alternative is to seek renewable source energy, which is obtainable. And it is done so that it is just transmitted through the network. And it is priced at the same price that Dominion supplies it with a small charge for the person who is producing the electricity or the entity that is producing. And it would result in renewable energy source, which would be a good thing, especially if we intend to go forward with electric vehicles and our expenditure of electricity is, will undoubtedly go up. There was.
The gas-powered.
The gas-powered leaf blowers. I think that is something that we could replace rather quickly and easily. And I don't know what the experience is up till date, that would be interesting to know. But there have been, I have received complaints, which I have passed on, concerning the noise of leaf blower generally. And, and they start at seven or eight o'clock in the. And they start at seven or eight o'clock in the morning and go through the day at various times. And they are noisier than the moats and people don't like it. And so if we can, for ourselves, we can't do. There is a possibility that we could even regulate the use of gas blowers in Reston, which I discussed with Tony some time ago. But it would be a little bit of a stretch perhaps. But certainly, the place to start is in our own operations. And it's not a costly effort, I think, and it would mean we would be able to say, well, at least we are doing it ourselves in order to reduce the amount of noise and to be more efficient and effective. So I can't see what's, let me look.
The third one is the alternative renewable energy, which I spoke to.
Right, no, but there was another one.
Oh, is there? Let's undertake a study, internal combustion engines, is the first one.
Yeah, that's the first one. While Erwin's looking at, Kim Lee-Horn did do a study for us two years ago on electric vehicles. And although automobiles have come on stream, the only, well, the cost of an electric truck is outrageous. The ones that they say are going to be for fleet use, you can't get. If you want to spend 100K a truck, you can do it. But I know Fords run into all kinds of problems with their 150 and the Rivian, you know, $100,000 truck to pick up tree debris is a little bit over the... The prices of these things will come down. And I'm not suggesting we do it today, but sometime in '25 or '26. We start with one vehicle and get, or two vehicles, and get experience with them. I think Chris has begun to look into, not the truck side, but the alternatives like on the small SUVs that we have in the cities to shift it, at least on a trial basis with EVs. But that's one of the reasons we're going to have an EV charging station over the nature center. If the determination of the board is to go electric, you're going to need to install a supercharger, that is, one that is a direct current charger. Because the other charges, Level One obviously is just ordinary house current, and Level Two is 240. And that takes time. That's roughly at a rate of about 30 miles per gallon, 30 miles per hour charging. And that's not going to work for a fleet of vehicles. And so you really will need at least one supercharger, probably more if you determine ultimately to go, but you start with one and then you can add afterwards.
Erwin, may I jump in with regards to your comments or suggestions? Just a few things to echo what Bob was saying. Several, if not all, the manufacturers, auto manufacturers are going to go electric, 2030, 2035, 2040. That's a given. So they're going there. Second, the prices of trucks, EV trucks, the prices are really high right now because they're just coming out. As you mentioned yourself, these prices will go down. May I suggest, I think it makes more sense to basically look at developing a plan, not to buy trucks next year, but to get ready in about four or five years, have a roadmap, have a plan ready and with some costs associated with it. That way, we'll have something as a plan to look forward to, as opposed to just jumping in there, buying trucks and getting experience. Because I don't think we're ready for that yet. That's a huge cost there.
Well, the original suggestion was to do a study, not to jump in. And it was projecting until the year '25 that we begin to look at implementing.
So here's a suggestion. So back to Erwin's point, the suggestion was to do a study. There are some things we could do relatively easily to marry some of these things. So for example, Bob's suggesting, yeah, there are trucks, we know we can't go out and buy all-new trucks. There are prob, we probably need to inventory all of our vehicles and which ones could potentially be transferred over and when, because some of them are new vehicles. We're not just going to get rid of them, you know, that sort of thing.
You have a list already.
We have a list, that's right. But we haven't done any sort of, should we trend when and how we should turn them into electric? We could do that. We could certainly look at the variables for where and how we would need to install new charging, you know, and put together some type of game plan. That's probably not the hugest, most expensive thing in the world, even if we need some consulting help in doing it. But if there's concurrence to look at that, just to keep this moving, I can get that priced out for you all. We did buy the one electric leaf blower. If there's a desire to know how much it would cost to replace them all right now, I can get that number like virtually overnight and you can, and then later you decide whether you want to do it or not.
It would be helpful to have input from Mike Mack, Mike Mack number, as to what his experience has been with the leaf blowers, once he has enough experience, because we need to know.
Yes. So we're in the middle of that now. We just bought it, so.
My suggestion is that all three of these are, to me, more strategic plan items, not budget items, and that we hold them and keep them on the potential strategic plan list.
I agree. Do I see head nodding? Just want to make sure I'm clear. Okay.
I'd like to add to that. I don't know that all of them should be moved to strategic plan. I do think that if we are going to, you know, do something like replacing, explore, replacing all of the leaf blowers, we probably should price it out to see what that's like. So I don't think, you know, we should move that off of this list. I think this is that it fits this list well. I do have a couple of additions, though. I'd like to make to the board suggestions if I can. One is fairly simple and is probably going to be fairly low cost. It's, I've heard a lot about this from parents in my area, and it's the little libraries. They've gone over really well, like at South Lakes Elementary. And they would be, it would be a nice community-building activity to have them on RA land around the area. So I would appreciate it if we could price that out. And then secondly, this is probably a bit more aggressive and may need to be shifted to strategic planning, but I'm going to throw it out there. I think we should look at advocacy. And I'm not going to go into any specific issues, but one thing that I hear constantly is that RA needs to be doing more about more issues. And, you know, like I said, I won't go into detail about specific issues, but I do think that it's something that we should start to explore as, you know, elected representatives of the communities. So my suggestion is that we price out, you know, doing three large advocacy campaigns in a year and see what that would cost. In addition to, I know we've got our new communication director, so what kind of staff needs would that mean? Social media, things along those lines, what would that cost?
Lori?
I just don't really understand what Travis is suggesting we be advocating for. I know no decisions would be made tonight, but can you give an example of what kind of advocacy a large homeowner association should be involved in?
Sure. Well firstly, you know, the issue isn't so much that we're a large homeowners association. The issue is that we're a large community organization and we've got, just off the top of my head, I'm thinking of, you know, transportation safety. There are a number of significant issues that we've, we are facing from bus stops to, you know, the way things are painted. And just, you know, throwing out a letter from time to time to Walter Alcorn and going to see him once a month isn't doing the job. It's not getting the point across and it's not getting any change made. So if we're going to advocate for our residents and for the safety of our residents and, you know, frankly, for, you know, use of public transportation in Reston as opposed to cars, we should be prepared to advocate for that. And I'm not saying that we should advocate against cars. What I'm suggesting is that, you know, in order to talk to VDOT and, you know, get the community behind certain issues, we've really, you know, in the same way that Reston has, you know, come out in the past against population density, I think that we as an organization can start to work harder to find things that we're for and, you know, work towards those issues. And it's going to cost money to do that.
I'm sorry, do we not have any paid advocacy as part of our association now? We have no paid advocacy?
No. I mean, we've got a communications director, but...
That's an interesting idea.
Lori, do you want to follow up to that?
No, thank you. That was illustrative. Thank you.
Anyone else? I tied in my board list with my member comments list. You wanted again, or are you good?
I just want to make sure I'm clear, though. I mean, head nodding, is there a desire for me to price out? So Travis just threw two things out there. As I was scribbling notes, Jennifer, I think everything you said was, came up in other memos and other discussions. I don't think there was something new, but I'll double check. I just want to make sure, because the point today is if we're going to go dedicate staff, so. And there's rain, I understand the advocacy thing is fine, I can help figure that out.
Advocacy should be part of our budget. I'm not sure, to be honest, how you would price that out, but all the examples you gave to me are land use things, and I think it fits with land use in general. And that, so I think, I'm not sure about pricing it out as much as we should be cognizant that we should add consulting dollars, something to the budget related to those items.
So paid advocacy, I think, works really well when you have direction. So I've experienced this in my career, I've dealt with paid advocacy work before, but you have to have a very specific viewpoint that you're advocating for. And so I didn't realize that we didn't have that. I don't know why I didn't realize that, but yeah, it seems obvious that association of our size with our land, with our interest in this area should have maybe some kind of paid advocacy that is beyond a grassroots effort, that is sophisticated and professional. And I think maybe the budget action for this year is to explore what does a paid advocacy program look like in RA? What is the issue that it should be going after, like land use scenes or transportation or something? I think that exploration, because you're, it's like a small department of the RA that you're creating, like, or which could be just one person, a department of one, but it's sophisticated, right? And you need to have, it needs to have an approved direction for it to be effective.
And Larry did some of that work for us, and when he retired, Mack has an outside consultant for some land use stuff to kind of do a stopgap. But like land use and, like, all the things you mentioned to me fit in the category of land use, but I think maybe we'll get some more direction on the board topic coming up that we've punted a couple of times now is a land use committee. And I think they would, they would, that committee could potentially speak to, or maybe give us the viewpoints or, you know, push up to the board, these are the things that we should advocate for. So we might, we might get there with that enough to put an earmark in the budget and then develop it along the way and then figure out how to use those earmark dollars.
I think we're operating from a slight misconception of what I said. What I said was just a random example based on, you know, one meeting that I, one or two meetings I've had recently. There are other issues that may not fall squarely under land use. So, you know, that particular issue may, and what, you know, you're talking about, I think we may need to have a coordinator that would work with, you know, land use and work with other folks to, you know, drive that forward. But I like the idea of creating, of studying what that would look like in this organization and then moving forward from there.
I'm supportive of that very strongly because I think it's very important. I think, I think we need to protect our equities writ large, everything from land use to revenue streams, to the community, to golf courses, to everything that's out there. And I think just solely relying on our representative at the county level to do things for us is a zero fault, it's a minus-one fault tolerance. We're very dependent on that. We need to act like, we're not a small homeowner association, we're a community. We're a town, really. This is what we are. And I think we need to have, an example that I could give is in the federal government and private industry, they've got lobbyists. They lobby on behalf of the companies, they lobby on behalf of their interests. Let's use that as an example to your point, but let's think about it strategically and carefully, not just go out there and do things. Get it coordinated, identify from the board what the priorities are for this board, for this community, for Reston now and the future, and make sure that we advertise this, publicize this. We need to do that. I strongly, I strongly recommend that we do that. Think about how we want to do this. Again, this is just, do a quick study, maybe it's just getting some brainstorming session. It has to be coordinated, it has to be focused, we can't go after everything, and it has to be done in a positive manner. We're not going against the county. We don't want to go against Walter. If, in fact, it's the opposite, we want to work with them. And I think that's a critical piece for us here, because in some areas, RA is perceived as not a friend type of thing, and we need to change that. And I think this is the right time to do that, set something up. I'm very strongly in favor of that. So Jennifer, yeah, I don't see it as just land, it's everything. It's about the community.
Yeah. Maybe my definition of land is just a bigger, because everything you all have mentioned to me falls under land use, but yeah, I think, I think that it would be money wisely spent. I agree that it's a protection of RA's future and the future of the community, and there's absolutely money that should be invested in doing that.
Okay. So since we don't have that program now, I'm pretty clear on some of the ideas, and I've been around this a lot, having spent 20 some odd years in local government and interacting with all of the kinds of people you're describing. I'll put together some options, and it should start with how robust a program are we really thinking about? What types of individuals do we want to be able to influence or help, you know, protect our interests through better relationships and those sorts? It's just, it's a time and money question, and I can help you all with that. And the best part of this is it's not just going to land on the CEO and the COO, which I think historically has been our approach, and things get lost. And that's why we're not as effective in lobbying, really.
Mike, I see it as an investment for the future. It's inexpensive, but it really is an investment, and I'm willing to bet money on this, that it will pay off in the long run.
And my preference for the output of your research would be high, moderate, and low, like menu-type selection, so we can see, you know, what does a big advocacy program look like, all the way down to what does, you know, one intern in the closet look like?
That would be too low. That's not speaking of stuff above.
It's an intern.
Sharing it with all of us.
If I could turn my two cents in. I think we need a strategy before we start pricing things out.
Yeah.
If we don't know where we're going.
Exactly. Any luck will take you there.
And what we can truly affect as opposed to just being annoyance.
Yeah.
Those are the important things.
Hundred percent, yes.
And I think if we're going to spend money, I would, I would be, I would guess we have our Edelman is, would be a good place to spend a few dollars talking with those guys about strategy.
There are communications when we need outside help.
We've used them for crisis management if something has come up and we need to get messages out, that's what I mean.
I'm sorry, what is the name of the firm you're mentioning?
Edelman.
Edelman.
We have a contract with Edelman, and they do some communications, mostly crisis communications, but when we need extra outside support for communications. But that's the type of communications they do, too.
One point of clarification, because there's an urban legend on this, we actually don't have a contract with Edelman. I was told that we did. We do not. I clarified that.
Okay, I remember approving the contract.
We entered.
It was, it was a reading error. It wasn't for the one time. Okay, I'll believe you, but I swore I remembered approving it.
But we're working on that because we should have a firm on for the things you're remembering when we use that firm, we should have a firm in case that happens, something like that.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's a multifaceted thing to be effective. So, but anyway, it's a multifaceted thing to be effective when you're trying to influence an entity and you don't have control over the final decision making, there's a lot of art and nuance to that. And Bob's right, there's definitely things that you can be effective at and some things you know you can't.
Right.
So you have to be very strategic and deliberate in where you're spending your money.
Absolutely. That's why when I was, I prefaced that with that it may need to shift to strategic planning. I think it's probably a two-tiered effort, you know, it should be part of the strategic planning. On the other hand, we should also determine how much it costs us.
Okay. Move on to the CIP. Dave?
One thing before we move on, fiscal committee would like you to price out one thing, and that's name pockets for the fiscal.
We will have that solved by the next meeting.
But seriously, okay, we do have four members on, on the Zoom, and I just want to make sure that they're having, you know, are they like unmuted and able to raise their hands? Because we can't see them from here. I just want to make sure that they can become part of the conversation if they need to.
Yeah, Brittany, if you see any chat items that you feel like we should unmute someone, just let me know, and we can do that.
And for those members that are on the phone, you know, do speak up, get them.
Is there a member named Ken who is?
Yes, Ken has.
Having trouble commenting? I got a direct message from someone named Ken whom I don't know in person.
Ken is on our fiscal committee.
Yes, I reached out to him and asked him if a firm that was on the committee, he didn't respond.
Okay. Because the committee members have the ability to unmute themselves, she would have promoted their access rights.
As long as they can, they know they can speak up. I just want to make sure that they have an opportunity.
Maybe Ken didn't have the access right.
Most of those folks online are not afraid to speak up.
Yeah, I know.
So I just want to make sure they got the authority.
We spent many evenings with them.
Okay, great. CIP.
Okay. So jumping into the CIP, I'm just going to make a couple of high-level introductory comments. I'm going to hand it off to Peter. One of the things that we have been doing some thinking about, and one of the primary reasons I brought in Peter is to think far more deliberately around our CIP and more importantly, the strategic nature in which we want to make capital facilities improvements decisions. As everyone in this room knows, we've got a lot of aging facilities, and a lot of our systems, systems to look at almost everything are based sort of assuming everything's fine, but our pools are old, they're not brand new anymore. And thinking about how and when we invest in certain facilities is a really important thing. There's another big factor out there, which is the community survey without putting, we've all sort of made this a much bigger thing than it is, but it's still a very important piece of information for us. It's going to come later this fall, and you may all recall from the May session, we talked about we're not going to have others, maybe some early wins out of the community survey, major CIP decisions, they're going to happen in '24. So as a result, we anticipate spending a lot of time in '24, having a very deliberate conversation with the community and with the board and set policy on what our highest priority and strategic way about thinking about future CIP ought to be. And so as a result, when you see the draft CIP in your folder for this evening's meeting, we've scaled back. We're not showing major pool projects, we're suggesting pushing back some of the tennis projects until they can be folded in better with the community desires and wants. So it's a much smaller CIP than you've seen in the last couple of years. We think that's the best strategic approach for '24, anticipating that we're going to have a very robust conversation for implementation in '25. So I'm going to hand it off to Peter to talk about some of the systems integration in that decision making, and as we get into it, we'll be talking, implementing obviously some of the public outreach components early in '24, but the physical projects you see in there are not of the large magnitude that you've seen the last couple of years.
Thanks, Mac. And Chris, we can go ahead and bump to the first slide. Thank you. I know everyone has missed my LG emails this week, so Mac gave me a few minutes to talk about the CIP. So when we look at the CIP, you know, from a global perspective, as Mac was talking about, I think we're doing a lot of things really well right now, and there's another level or another gear that we can get to. And I think it's, the first thing is finding the intersection of all of the things that feed into our facility use. The reserve study is a big piece of how we look at the CIP already. We have inspections, we follow best practices, which is how we get into this sort of cyclical nature of how things show up in the CIP. But really, over the next year, what we're looking at specifically is the intersection of all of these things, but we're missing a few elements in my opinion, such as community engagement, maybe evaluation of facility use and past sales, really digging into what the community survey is telling us about use of facilities, and then finding the intersection of the things we've done in the past and other things we can use to look at the CIP and say, yes, maybe this field hasn't been touched in five years and it would cyclically come back, but we know that pools are being used at a high level and the community wants them. So we need to look, I think, a little deeper and peel back a few more layers as we continue to look at the CIP. So if we can bump to the next slide, this is a slide that I love that Chris has of how the two, a project listing and the capital budget are always sort of talking to each other, and this is a nonstop effort to build a CIP that serves Reston. The piece I think that's missing here that I really wanted to hit on is community engagement. We have these processes, we have these ways that we come up with the CIP so we can get the funding and go do the work, which I think is wonderful. But if we start to look especially at the high dollar project pools and other items, you know, putting a cover over top of Lake Newport, who are we talking to about that? Why are we doing that? What is the purpose for that? So I think there's a way that we can go out, you know, we bumped, as Mac said, Lake Newport was showing in '24, it's been bumped to '25, '26. What is the best way for us to engage that community similar to what we're doing at Barton Hill? Let's go out and have a conversation about, do we have a cover? Did the community survey say we need a cover? All of those items should feed into that conversation. So as we look at this slide in the future, I think there's things we can add. It's a great slide now, but I feel like the engagement piece here is missing. So if we can bump ahead to the next slide. So the next two, and you can't see it, if we could maybe move the screen there. So talking about Triple RF, as everyone probably knows, Triple RF is where most of our projects fall. This is replacement of existing facilities, and the purpose is to sort of avoid spikes in what the community should be funding. Chris is showing here on this slide, and again, we can't see it, but this is a rolling 10-year average. So there we go. If you look at the 10-year average, it is increasing over time, but as I understand it, as Mac has sort of talked to me about it and Chris, you know, we look at the out years as things that are just sort of cycling through. If you look at 2033, it's a significant increase in funding, but that's because we haven't really taken a look at what's out there, other than cyclically it should be showing up, but it's not a real number at this point. So we can just bump, Chris, to the next slide. I really like what this is showing as you look at the rolling 10-year average and the expense. So as Mac mentioned, we're looking at 2024 as let's get things done that we need to get done that are coming over from '23. There's some maintenance capital things that we need to look at, and then the CIP sort of bumps back up to our typical $4 million mark over the next bunch of years until we move to 2032, '33 where you see that spike again. What we would expect as we looked at a new approach and a new workflow for our capital program is to see that same sort of $4 million number, but we're going to change what we're investing in based on the things that I'm talking about, all of the variables that should feed a CIP that serves a community the size of Reston. So this is really just to show that there are some things in the out years, we are staying below that 10-year average, but this, these numbers are subject to change based on the types of investments that we're looking at. So I'm going to wrap up in a minute here, and we're going to turn it over to Chris, who's coming to us live from the Outer Banks. But if we can bump to the last couple of slides here for me, something I'm very excited about as we look at building a CIP is where and how we're investing and what we're investing in. So Chris and his team have done a wonderful job from a GIS perspective of mapping the things that we have invested in over the last bunch of years. So if you look at the investments and you'll see South Lakes has this sort of asterisk for Lake Audubon and Lake Throw as being two major investments, there's a relatively equal investment throughout Reston as far as the CIP is concerned. The distribution is pretty even, but this is just based on location and district. So if we go to one more slide, something new that we looked at for this year is what are we actually investing in in those districts? So if you look at facility maintenance, tennis, pools, lakes, and parks, this was our sort of first pass at how do we look at this from a more analytical perspective? What is our best way of looking at this so that we build a CIP in the out years, we're not only looking by district, but in those amenities that are being mostly, mostly used by the members? So as you can see, it's still pretty straightforward, it's still pretty even in some areas. We tried to really tie facility maintenance into things that didn't fall into those other four categories. That's sort of a catchall. If we saw fencing or lighting, things like that, that's what falls into facility maintenance. But you can see that we're pretty even across the board. We would look to this as just another metric as we build a capital plan in the out years. So this is just something new for this year that we put together. I think it can help inform us sort of as we move forward. So Chris is going to take it over from here. I'm happy to address any questions when Chris is finished.
Thanks, Pete. So kind of going into the next phase here, which is, you know, what is the capital improvement plan, which is kind of the side document that's trailing along with the main annual budget? And so this is a comprehensive document that outlines all the projects, both major and minor and routine over the next five-year period. And it's really a planning document that we update on an annual basis and move forward. So we're looking at, you know, trying to integrate many things with the strategic plan, the survey, all these different data points that kind of feed into this overall plan to then set ourselves up for the future. Within the document, it provides a synopsis of all the major projects, some of the assumptions for the as-is replacements for them. And then, as I mentioned, they outline all the kind of standard projects we do, both Triple RF and CARF for the next period. So this is a document I'm still kind of putting together, and I will hope to have a kind of a first draft version for you to see here in the coming weeks. But right now, we're just kind of going through it from more of a high-level aggregated phase as part of the first draft here. So as you can see here, here's the aggregated outline of all the capital projects for the next five years, broken down by project categories. So you have administrative stuff, which is a lot of things to do with, you know, printers or website type things, and then we have, you know, all of our other elements, pedestrian trails, lakes, ponds, parking lots, pool buildings. So as Pete mentioned, we've been making some tweaks to kind of rearrange ourselves to allow us to have more planning time and member engagement. This includes moving Lake Newport tennis from what was originally scheduled in 2024 to actually 2025 and 2026. So not only moving it out a year, we're actually stretching some of these larger projects out to also try to correlate them more accurately with their construction schedules. Another one is Uplands Tennis, which has been moved out another year, that's been moved from '25 to '26, and then Shadowwood Tennis, which was moved from '26 to '27. So you kind of see this overall shifting everything out another year and then kind of spreading them out. So getting into, you know, what is a major capital project? So within the CIP, it's defined as anything over a half million dollars, and it's not considered routine or reoccurring. And so it's something that's strategically identified by the board for improvement or reinvestment, and we phase it according to this project lifecycle that you see below. We're going to be integrating a lot more into the public engagement, into the initiation phases and planning and scoping phases. We're going to try to really fine tune that a bit more, and then we'll be carrying on through the various key decision points on these major projects to provide the board an opportunity to kind of weigh in and provide guidance or tell us to perhaps go back to a previous phase and kind of rebuild it again until it's ready, where it's at a point where it's ready to move forward. So some of the major projects that are scheduled out for the next five years are here in this below table. So we have Lake Newport Tennis, Hook Road Recreation Area, which has multiple elements that are spread out over time to kind of phase that one in according to a lot of the desires from the Hook Road Working Group back in 2018. We have a pool renovation for Golf Course Island currently in 2025, Uplands Tennis and Ridge Heights Pool renovation, so '26 and '27. You have Shadowwood Tennis renovation in '27 and '28, and then Autumnwood Tennis, it's a current renovation scheduled in 2028, but that has not been split out yet either. So you can see the kind of aggregate of all the different projects there, and then a comparison to the total capital expenditures in any one particular year. So you kind of see the breakout of the capital, major capital expenses versus the overall capital expense. So kind of highlighting just some of the big major projects that are scheduled out here in the next couple of years, starting off with Lake Newport Tennis. You know, it's our largest, most popular tennis facility, built in '85. It has a dedicated bathroom facility already onsite that was installed about 10 years ago, I believe. It was a drop-in installation by Crane. We have six-sided courts there, so there's a lot of light fixtures that need replacement. They're all metal halide, they need to be upgraded to LED to kind of match more of our standards that we've been using at Hook Road and Autumnwood. In 2010, there's a conceptual design that was actually DRB approved to enclose the facility, and so perhaps, you know, as supported, perhaps if it is supported by the, by the survey, we may want to investigate that as an option again perhaps. And then below that is a conceptual design that we've been working with our engineering team to kind of get just an initial flavor of what we would perhaps do just on a minor enhancement basis. We're keeping the facility generally as it is, but making some enhancements to improve accessibility and other elements on the site that need repair. The other one is Hook Road Tennis in '24 and '26. So as I mentioned, in 2018, after a year-long effort with Hook Road Working Group, several elements were identified for enhancement on the park. Kind of the first thing that kicked off on that site was in 2021, I believe, which was the tennis court renovation. That wasn't really an element that was focused on by the working group, but it was a big piece of the facility, of that part that needed to be replaced as part of its just standard maintenance schedule. We have other things there that are the ball fields to be realigned and pushed in with each other to promote safety, installation of a permanent bathroom facility, and then several accessibility pathways around the site. So we're looking to try to phase this project into two pieces, and we're looking to try to execute the ball field side to the western half of the site you see highlighted first. So we're going to try to kick that off in 2024. It may carry into 2025, depending on some of the elements. We're almost cleared with the site plan. We're trying to get through the last few elements or comments there, but we should have that approved pretty soon, and we'll be able to get started on that perhaps by the end of the year if we can get through procurement. But it's most likely going to be kicking off in the new year and wrapping up sometime, you know, mid, mid-half of next year. Phase two will be the other side, the eastern side of the site, and we'll be kind of kicking that off in 2025 with the elements of the bathroom pavilion, which is the biggest piece, and some of the other accessibility points to that bathroom pavilion. So that will require board approval, being that the bathroom pavilion is a completely new element. There's nothing there, anything like that we'd have to install, sanitary sewer, water, and extend a power line from the tennis court area to install that. This is just an assemblage of all the other major projects that are kind of further out in the timeline. You've got Lake Ann Dan, which is still to be determined. We're waiting for some additional direction on that project. We're really to, able to provide a clear indication of what we're going to do and how much it's going to cost, but we wanted to ensure that it was kind of brought forward and made to your attention so that you know it's out there. GCI Pool, you know, Uplands Tennis, Ridge Heights Pool, all these other ones I've mentioned in that previous outline, this kind of gives you a quick summation of some of the things that we're looking to do or need to be done as part of those projects. Okay, now, so we're going into the Capital Asset Acquisition Reserve Fund, or better known as CARF. There's been a lot of discussions with the fiscal committee on how we really define what CARF is, and so I tried to take a lot of the flow chart we created, some of that to kind of condense it down into some kind of high-level bullet points. CARF is really something that kind of needs to stand alone. You know, it's something that's not included in the current reserve study, it doesn't exist in our asset inventory. We must be able to easily distinguish it from existing assets in its form and function, you know, capable of identifying its cost of life expectancy separately from the surrounding assets, and often provides, you know, newer significantly changed functionality or amenity to the facility. So once a CARF project is completed, it's then entered into the asset inventory and then included with other Triple RF replacements on its schedule. So here are kind of two examples of the images. The spider crawler lift was one that we made several years back. It's actually coming up for replacement next year. That was a new acquisition, and we'll be replacing that as part of our Triple RF funding model. And then the below is the, you know, probably recognize the glade slide. I would say we installed something like that on, you know, Golf Course Arm, for example. That would definitely be a standalone kind of new amenity that's not existing, that you could pretty well separate that from everything around it if you were to install something like that on that site. So we have a couple of proposed CARF projects, some of these you've probably seen before. These are driven by staff suggestions, PRAC, you know, member users and the board. Some projects are opportunities to enhance other major projects, and they necessitate board approval, but we've included them in the budget and now just for presentation and discussion purposes only. So the first one is an inclusive playground installation. So there's been some member or staff interest in installing one of these facilities. We do know that Fairfax County is actually looking to install something similar to this over there behind the Home Depot Shopping Center where there's a current playground right now. So we're working with Friends of Reston on a potential joint venture perhaps to try to find a point somewhere in the south of Reston to install an inclusive installation. And we're pretty rough in the numbers right now, it could be anywhere between quarter and a half million, depends on size and features. I know the installation at Fairfax County is probably going to be pretty large if they're going to a site plan, and it's going to be about 1.6 million. We're not really, I think, at this time proposing something of that scale, but unless there's overwhelming desire and interest from the board, we could look into that. But as I mentioned, we're looking into it right now. We're contemplating a joint venture with Friends of Reston to help sort of fund and spearhead this installation. And then, you know, going back to Hook Road, kind of helping identify some of the Triple RF stuff versus the CARF stuff there, since I know there's been some confusion. So the ball field elements are, you know, something that we're considering within Triple RF since they're existing there. And we're just adjusting them and enhancing them, but we're still keeping them generally the same. But what we are really changing is the pathway network, because we don't have any pathways on that site. So you can see all those blue lines on those maps above are where the new pathways are being included as part of the site plan installation. This still needs to be D R B approved, but we are looking to do these type of installations, so that's CARF element. The bathroom pavilion, you can see kind of a conceptual what we have in mind would also be a CARF element since we don't have anything there besides just a portage on enclosure. So this is a new standalone installation that would be part of a CARF budget. So Pete, I can hand it back to you if you'd like.
Thanks, Chris. So similar to the operating budget, we pulled a few questions together. I'm sure everyone has seen them. So I think we can turn it back for board discussion.
If we could just hit these in order, though, so if there's discussion or something, we can get an answer before moving to the next one. Make sure we're... Yeah, these are the CIP questions. That'd be helpful. And I'll just add one more piece, because I've been involved with Friends of Reston. I wouldn't categorize that as a joint venture so much as there's been some discussion of a large capital campaign that could easily be in the million-dollar range, much the way the Walker Nature Center, you know, grew and scoped over time. So as compared to if that scope gets bigger, a bigger ask of RA, that would not be the concept. If Friends of Reston wanted to do a big capital campaign for a very large ADA playground, that would involve donations from outside entities. But we did want to point out for you all that we do have a couple hundred thousand dollars if you wanted to put money into such a venture. We have it out there in two places. Right now, we have some money in the Lake Newport Playground. We had set aside some money this year to go do some work out there. And then I'll leave it to Chris and Pete, but we're seeing some savings in a few other places in the Triple RF. And that money could just simply be rededicated if we wanted to use that as well.
I have a question. So the permanent bathroom installations, this is the first that has come up in a meeting that I've participated in. At first, when I heard it, I was very thrilled because I've rented pavilions and there have been no bathroom facilities. And it's been very frustrating because some of the pavilions are really nice if they had bathrooms. But I'm really concerned about the cost and the safety of those bathrooms. Because when you start putting in permanent bathroom facilities, you have to deal now with homelessness issues. You have to deal with drugs. You have to deal with safety. You have to deal with teenagers. How, what about the operating costs of those permanent bathrooms? And how are they going to be monitored? And how is that being factored into these plans?
So permanent bathroom facilities, we have several at a couple of different pavilions. We have one over Lake End. We have another one over at Dogwood Pool, actually. There's one actually as part of the building. We've used timed locks on the Lake End one to help mitigate unauthorized use after hours. We have staff to do intermittent cleanings and checks on the facilities to make sure that they're functional and in good shape. So those are things that we've done and experienced before. The exact operational costs, I'm not super familiar with. That's something maybe Mike Mack would know more about. But, you know, security standpoint, we've been pretty successful. I'm just using simple timed locks and then some security lighting as needed.
Is that because of the location? Because we're becoming an urban center now. I just want to bring that up. Like, we're becoming an urban center with urban problems. We have a metro. We have a lot of buildings and we're getting hotels. Like, we're getting, Reston is changing and becoming more of a city or suburban environment. And I'm just going to put it out there. I think we really need to think about the permanent bathrooms' impact and homelessness and drug use and safety issues surrounding with them. Has that been evaluated with these locations and the proximity to metro and the hotel and all that stuff?
It was a comment and concern I recall during the one-year engagement with the working group. And it was something we discussed in detail in terms of how we could arrange it and position it on the site to make sure it was visible, which may dissuade people from using it incorrectly. And then timed locks is one thing that's worked well for us in the past and was agreed upon as a good idea by the working groups. It was thought of and considered as part of the desire of putting this in as a permanent installation.
So if we could pull back up the questions, just as a way to try to organize this. The CIP, it really is showing less in improvements. We are offering that one reason this might make sense is the community survey and its impact on the major projects, the 500K plus that might otherwise slide into this year's CIP. I mean, I think question number one is, are we on board with that strategy? Or should we go back to starting to think about moving, whether it's Golf Course Island or Lake Newport Tennis or some of those other projects that have been bantered about?
I'll offer my opinion. Given that as of this year, we have a $7.8 million capital budget. We're not going to finish all that $7.8 million. It is not unreasonable. This is not lessening the activity. It's just not doing these big projects. When you consider a footbridge costs a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars to replace. And those aren't considered major projects, but they're, you know, they're sort of regular. Chris, aren't there going to be two next year that are scheduled to be replaced?
I believe next year, we kind of have a bit of a gap. We tend to try to give ourselves at least a year in between budget. Yeah, just because of the time it takes to install.
Okay. Maybe it was this year. It's 25.
Yes, it is 25.
I think this provides Chris and his staff the opportunity to catch up with all the projects that are in process now that could and should be completed in the coming year.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Bob in so much as I think this list gives us the ability to get some good wins under our belts relatively quickly. And I think it's really, really well laid out. Though I did have a question. I didn't see Barton Hill anywhere in the budget. So I wanted to ask... Thank you.
And you'll have an opportunity in September to be talking about advancing that. Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Once something is funded in the budget for board members that are new, once it's funded, it stays there unless the board defunds that project. This is just, so it's always new. You're kind of adding and Chris is kind of subtracting as he finishes projects. But the ones that are approved stay.
I just want to say I'm in complete agreement with Bob's comment and also Travis's. And I think it's important to show membership that we're doing things for them and for them to know that we're doing that. So these little things that can be done, I believe it's the right thing to do.
So I just had one question on timing. We want to make sure that we're able to... So right now, we have, to a certain extent, we have cleared a little bit of the deck in '24 in anticipation of the identification of survey-related items. But if we go back to kind of what Pete was talking about, we need the survey to identify these items. And then we're going to need some targeted, community-specific discussions to help plan these items out, right? So does it make more sense to clear the deck a little bit more on the '25 side? And to Bob's point, to Travis's point, get even more of these small victories. The small upgrades to the pools, the small upgrades to the trails, get even more of that done in '24 so that we can have a lesser agenda for '25 that can more easily and kind of, or kind of time appropriately, insert in the larger items that we're going to hear from our user community.
My comments are, I'm a yes for now. If something, like, we're going to get results of the survey, if something really pops up then, or if Chris identifies something in his fall inspections, or like, it's a yes for now. But if it needs to go above $2 million because of other things that come up, I think we should be prepared for that because, you know, we could be in that place. But I want to be cognizant, this more goes to strategy probably than budget. But if we are going to quote-unquote "take this break", then I really think that as an association, we need to be committed to working towards building stuff from the member survey. And I believe our reserve studies due next year. And I would, and you had commented at the beginning of the meeting, that reserve study that we did five years ago was great. I would be in favor of adding some more functionality or looking at a vendor that can add us more functionality. It's a very data-intensive, but there's, I don't feel like there's enough stuff in it that allows us to do the actual analytical pieces. We just have a bunch of spreadsheets with data. And I know Chris has a little bit more where he can kind of query something. But, you know, a consultant that can give us more, you know, analytics related to trends. What are, you know, how is it going to trend, you know, within inflation factors that, you know, are different? Or which things should we group together and do as one instead of doing as five? Which I kind of have a comment about North Hills pool stuff. Like, I noticed where, you know, we have, Chris, on your list, you have things spread out at North Hills over seven things over the five years that are on the list. And it's like, should we look, and I know, Chris, you do this when you can, is look at seeing if we can group things at sites. Is that the right approach? And so we'd need to spend 2024 doing that because we keep, I feel like, kicking the can down the road. And we just can't afford to do it much longer because we don't want to see assessments increase so much. Or, you know, we might end up having to go down the borrowing path, and that might be a good strategy for us. But, you know, I think Bob and I have studied it a lot, and those out-years are really scary. And we need a true plan. So taking the time in 2024 to really making that plan would have to be a priority if we're going to keep that number as low as it is on the list right now. And I also wanted to request from Chris, can I have the other five out-years? When you get a chance? Because Triple RF averages all 10 years, and so I want to see the five out-years. Because if we move projects, then it could affect our 10-year average for a budget process. So I'm a yes for now on this one.
Just a couple of points of clarification. So one of the things I sent you, in one of the memos I sent you about programs and budgetary things, I told you that I'm pricing out and want to talk about some consultant dollars for implementation of the community survey, both programmatically, like physical demand needs and financial strategy. And I think that that would be money well spent to be thinking about some of the stuff you're getting at right here. So it's not just this meeting a year from now with reams of data, just ourselves. And then to answer Trevor's questions a little bit there, too, the '25 budget, one of the things I've observed here, we call it a two-year budget. It's really not. It's always a one-year budget because of the relationship to the assessment. Normally, we'd be making, in my experience, 24 months worth of decisions as we go through this. We're not. We're having the same meeting every year because of the impact to the assessment. One of the things that I want to start, though, having a deliberate conversation with everybody about is CIP and O and M are different pots of money. And what keeps happening in RA is we talk about them separately, and then how does it affect the assessment? And they're back in the same bushel and making commitments to the community about how we are going to build facilities for them. And staying true to that is a really important concept. And I just see everything keep getting thrown back in to see what the assessment is. And there's lots of ways we might be able to keep the color of money more straight for everybody. It could be a debt issuance. It could simply be, once it's here, it can never go there, you know, even with board action or something, you know. There's different ways to think about that. But I think for now, the big questions out on the table are, how are we going to implement the community survey? How are we going to get more strategic about marrying up our usage, our community wants and desires, and limited resource in terms of money? So there's lots of variables there, and we're working on that strategy. And it's going to be, there's a lot. So as I'm getting ready to talk to you all at BACH meetings coming forward about how to actually do that, that's a lot of work for the board to hit on all those policies.
I just want to say, I agree with Bob. There are a number of projects that will be carried over into '24 as it is, okay? That are already funded, need to get done. So it's not like by only funding another couple million, that Chris has nothing to do. He's going to be pretty busy. And in general, I'm for that. We have to be careful, though, because I won't make the phrase about the road. But we have, you know, just to give you some numbers, bear with me. I'm a numbers guy. So only for a second. You know, the next, you know, based on the numbers we have now, the next 10 years, we average about, needing about $3.5 million to do Triple RF the next 10 years. The following 10 years, it goes to about seven on the average. We can't keep pushing it out, okay? So we do have to be a little careful about pushing it out. And if there are, and there must be plenty of things in Triple RF that aren't going to be affected by the customer survey. I would think. There's a lot of just regular stuff that's got to be done, okay? So while I agree there'll be plenty of work to do, we just need to be, we might want to look at that whole next 10 years and really think about what we can fit in. And maybe the survey is going to let us do that better so that we then spread out that more. But we may have to start pulling things in to years like '27, '28, and '29 and not let them all show.
Yeah, so when I look at the schedule and the chart of expenses and the 10-year average contribution, what's not being shown there in all of these is, you know, in most years, the expenses is lower than the contribution. Strange that it's always like that. It should flip at some point. It looks like it doesn't flip until the last year. So I'm just a little bit confused about how the calculation is working. But what it means is that every year, we are assessing extra cash to buy down future Triple RF expenses. And that's why we have so much extra cash in the Reston Association right now. But we don't ever talk about that extra cash and how much is in it and what part of it is supposed to be used for these future expenses. But that is essentially what the math is doing. So every year, the expenses are lower than the 10-year average contribution that we're buying the assessment. So our cash is going up and up and up. Now, we use some of it to fund operating, but then we never made our operating anyway. So we have this pile of money that needs to be factored in and part of this conversation. We cannot have an intelligent conversation about Triple RF and funding an assessment without understanding the cash position and how it's to be utilized. It's missing. And $1 million, you know, just in quick math, so everyone understands, $1 million in average being off, right? Is $40-something dollars in assessment? You know, we don't see in 2024 what the 10-year average contribution is, how much it's off because of that $2 million. I don't have that number.
It's 3.7.
It's 3.7.
Something like that.
We still have extra cash. So what is really important going forward is that we have a solid understanding of cash as part of these conversations. We've never had that before, and it really needs to be transparent and available to everybody to understand.
Yeah, that's important. I just want to just clarify what Lisa's saying with the number, okay? Because it relates to the comment I made about pushing things out a little bit too far, okay? The next 10 years, based on the current schedule, and believe me, Chris, I know it's going to change. It's fluid, okay? But the way it is right now, we will be increasing our Triple RF funds by $13 million on top of what we have today. So we'll be close to $20 million sitting in to fund the projects that are out beyond 10 years. Because we're staying below the 10-year average.
Of what we're spending.
We might need to accelerate that and not bring in so much funds.
So not a numbers guy. What are the ramifications of that in relation to the out-year scariness that Jen and Bob referred to earlier?
We're holding members' money. Now.
Right, we're taking the money now, telling them we'll deliver later.
Until, I don't know, maybe after you guys move out.
And if I'm, you know, I might say, gee, if the average person owns a home 10 years, I'm paying for the next 10 years. I'm going to move out, and then you're going to do all this stuff.
Right.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing wrong. I mean, we've developed a program that helps us fund Triple RF and make sure we do it, you know, in a way that we're prepared for anything that comes down the road. But you have to, and it, the way it was designed was more of a, you know, one year, you're down, next year, you're up. One year, you're down, next year, you're up. We're kind of going this way now. So now we're just, we're paying so much more upfront than we used to.
So Travis, I just have a couple thoughts on this, because when we talk about cash, I agree with everything Lisa said, but I just want to make sure we clarify. When we talk about cash position, we also talk about all this excess O and M. When we talk about cash position, we also talk about all this excess O N M dollars, which comes from a different thing than what she was describing.
Strictly capital.
Strictly on the capital side and largely on the O N M, it's staff salaries or we sell wetlands re mitigation thing, you know. So we're running a a big, to the good surplus on the O N M side. But Dave hit the point I want to, was going to make too, which is if if you don't use a ten year average, your assessment spikes and based on your needs year to year. The downside to that is that you might be collecting early for something you're not going to use the money for later. The what Lisa's saying is, well, but if you still look at the curve, and this is some of the truing up we're starting to take a look at, we're potentially over collecting by a little bit each year, which adds up to a very big number over time to make sure you're never low on the ten year average over time. Does that make more sense?
It does. Uh, but just based on everything I'm hearing, I mean, I understand why someone would say, you know, I'm moving out in ten years. This doesn't affect me. But, you know, for the community as a whole, it sounds like a smart long term investment. Or long term investment, that might not be the right word, but it sounds like a a smart move, fiscal move.
We haven't evaluated that cash stockpile and and applied it to this calculation. Like we have a, we have a, you have to look at it like there's a stockpile of cash of X amount. And then there's also a stockpile of cash in O N M. We have a lot of cash. We're very fortunate. We're sitting on a ton of cash. What is the right amount of cash to sit on? Like, I know we've talked about that in fiscal and there's there's a thing.
To that point, the way you describe it sounds like we're just collecting and we're not spending. It's just sitting there. It has this negative connotation. So the question, the natural question is, to your point, what should it be? And is it going to be aligned with, call it a strategic plan or an expense plan that is consistent with everything that the membership wants and it's consistent with the C I P plan itself? Is there a relationship? Because the way you're describing it is like we're collecting, but we don't have a plan for it. Am I getting it right?
Yes.
The members will say, why not do Lake Newport this year? Why are we pushing it out? Why don't we do Golf Course Island this year? We do have the money.
Two reasons.
Yeah.
Number one, all these major projects take more than one year. We're now into three years plus with Lake Throw. It's and it's just takes that long to get that complex of a project completed. And number two, the the point that was made by Mac is that without collecting the money upfront, your assessment goes up and down. And you're going to see hundred hundred dollars increase one year. It'll be down twenty five the next year, up one hundred and fifty the next year. So the the thought behind at least what I've always kind of rationalized the ten year average is to look, is to take expectations for the next ten years, which is, which is the function of the reserve study. In fact, it's helped thirty years. Look at the expectation of spending. Given the assumptions that our experts say is going to cost to replace like for like items. And the calculation is to take the average of the ten year, ten year forward, add a contingency, ten percent contingency amount to it. The problem with that is, as Lisa Lisa has pointed out, is we're not spending all that cash immediately. It's built up. Which, yeah, it's absolutely true, but now we're our pool, particularly our pools are at the point where they're starting to pile up. We, you know, we've had pool motors that have blown up and that's just, that's to be expected when the pool is forty years old. And the plumbing, we've we've had, we've come up with some really crazy stuff that they throw on the plumbing that has been completely off the wall. You know?
So Bob, two, two, two things again, uh, just from my own understanding. Um, it almost sounds like we're being hyper conservative with this.
We are.
With this hyper conservative, not conservative. And we're just overshooting, really, with the numbers.
We haven't pulled the trigger on the major renovations that have been in years.
So with that in mind, really begs the question, if you will, why don't we just start doing these projects with the monies, but not really over aggressively spend all that money, but just pick and choose prioritizing these things and do it now?
The opposite side of that is you run into members say, well, you've closed my pool. And you're going to close it for three years. You bleep, bleep, bleep. You guys don't know what you're doing. Well, when, in that case, you know, we we run into that problem, we know. I'm afraid we do. We have been called those names. Um, so we know how to address it. We we've learned lessons. We've got lessons learned from from that situation. So let's put them in action, you know, and start to start to start to figure it out. The, um, because because what what I'm hearing, like like Joel says, is, you know, we've got, we've been extremely conservative and with what Lisa says, we've not really done a study on what to do with that. So we don't know how we can lower, even how to lower the curve.
Correctly, correct, right, just rightly. We don't want to just bring it down to zero, but just instead of being way out there, just just adjust it a little bit.
Yeah, but we don't know how to.
Well, I, I hear your point. The idea that, so there's a, my observation in three, in over three years is that it takes a long time to make a decision about a pool. And because we don't have a an operating plan, right? And so what we've talked about in fiscal, Dave's idea, I don't know whose idea it was, is just that every year, two pools should be out of service and they should be renovated. And if we're working on a long term strategy for a pool, you can't touch something that's been renovated in the last ten years. They just become out of conversation. So you only have access to do major renovations on things that are coming up in the future. But you have a repair and maintenance schedule that spends the money, that gives us the facilities. Or we want, as members, we want the pools, we want the facilities. When you go to Lifetime Fitness, it is nice to go there. You're walking in. It's like a spa environment. People look forward to going there because it's very well maintained and it's updated. And we have chosen not to do that with our assets. And so they devalued and members aren't using it because nobody looks at Reston pools like they would look at going to a Lifetime Fitness pool. Like they're just not up kept at that level. We've done the bare minimum and have not spent the money. And it's time to put a, I recommend as as we go through this, we need to put a plan in place where it's just that two pools are closed every year. We work our way through the system and any big project, you have to do it on a pole that has not been renovated recently because that would be a waste of money to spend a couple million dollars to renovate something. And you just work your way logically through the system and we set those guidelines. We set those guidelines to crack. We set them on ourselves as a board, as a board and operations and say, this is our plan. And we start spending the money to give people the value.
So I think we're diverging just a tad from the slides or what we're what we're trying to accomplish. But the good news is, is Mac and team are looking at it from a strategic angle. And we have done some of the lake work to to get us some of the data. The fiscal committee is actually doing a project on cash that they could bring back to the board this year. And so hopefully it will all come together. Um, but definitely when we're doing strategic plan, let's all remember kind of these comments and conversations so that we don't, we don't lose them.
Jennifer, just just one, I I know we're beating this horse to death, but I think it's critically important that we really look into this and not maintain this trajectory of being hyper conservative and being afraid of spending the money because we're worried that, you know, we don't, we we might want to close the pool for two years. Listen, all other major infrastructure projects, Metro closed so many lines for so many months and a couple of years and it was painful. But you know what? They had to do that because they because they had to fix things. I think we're facing the same thing here. You know, as long as we explain it to the membership and we put it out there in a plan that says the reason we're doing this is this and just bear with us, we need your help. I think the membership, I think the members will appreciate the fact that we're thinking about this and we're fixing stuff for the future. I think it's really important.
So how this impacts us, though, is like, I think the expenses are too low. Like when we're looking at the budget, I think the whole goal of pausing and having this low spending rate for one year is to regroup, to launch a plan to spend, to accelerate spending and get, start working our way through all our assets. So like if I look at twenty twenty five with a two point nine million, that's still pretty low. That's still at least a million off. I think we really need to think about this. We need to bump up the numbers because the whole point of doing a survey, the whole point of doing input is to figure out how to spend money. And we need to get a plan that is very definitive and not wishy washy and saying, this is the plan. We're going to, this is the schedule. These pools will be closed. They will be upgraded. And then you have years to work on those plans.
Right. So maybe look at twenty twenty five.
Yeah, can I just offer, we're kind of jumping the gun a little bit. We're having a discussion I was planning on having with you all about April on what to do for twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. Basically, what you're outlining, though, is what our strategic advice is going to be to you. We've been going year to year on what really needs to be a long term facilities strategy. And that doesn't come together overnight. You know, even spitball great ideas tonight, they need to be really well thought out. And at some point, we have to have a discussion about whether or not a debt issuance makes sense for our association or doesn't. And how do we think about fiscal planning? But the only, I always want to make sure, I don't think we would want to use the word hyper conservative. I think there's a reason we've ended up in the cash position that we have. And it's not necessarily a bad thing to have cash because, you know, of the, call it seven million that we have, we've got a lot more in need. We could spend that money quickly if we really chose to. I think the question is how we can be more strategic in making those decisions. And that's got to be a conversation around policy and and use and what the membership wants, a whole lot of things that we just have not done great in the past. And we're we're doing that work now so that we can sit down and talk about all the strategy things you're all talking about. So I think really the question for tonight is, are you, is everybody generally okay that that, we want to get to a more strategic capital facilities approach? And in so doing, we're not going to load up with major pool projects next year. So we can do that work and then do it more deliberately and spend down the cash surplus.
So I think the answer to that is yes, but because you also have to present something for twenty twenty five, don't come back with a low number. Put something there and we don't, it it's going to change.
Yeah.
But show the members as we're developing the budget that that number is increasing in the future.
These numbers are just deflating the assessment value because they're going into the ten year average and they're probably unrealistically low at this point in time from where we're standing now.
Yeah. So I think the next one is on Lake Newport test. And that is, it was supposed to be in twenty twenty four and we're proposing to bump it out to twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
What what would be then?
I would be in favor of bumping it out to twenty twenty six and maybe doing like a little like research, you know, cost study thing in twenty twenty five. But my point in general, probably on all of these, is to Peter's point in the beginning. And that is, we need to include the member feedback. And we're going to get the survey, but that does not tell us what do the members want at Lake Newport Tennis? Because it's a facility survey. It's not, here's Lake Port, Lake Newport Tennis. And so we're, we're going to have to have lead time to get member feedback to then put it in a an engineering plan or a a budget. And so not for the, you know, the reason I would be more in favor of considering bumping some of these projects out is because I want to follow and I sent the board a message about this. We have a capital or facilities planning matrix. And step one, after something comes up for five hundred thousand, so it's not five hundred thousand. And if we're making changes, it's just a strict five hundred thousand. The very first step is to go to crack and to go to the members about that facility. And we need to do that in twenty twenty four if we're going to do Lake Newport in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six.
Jennifer, just on your comment, is the facility right now usable? Can it be used until twenty twenty five or is it so bad that it has to be?
No, it's really actually in pretty decent shape. Yes.
Then I agree with you.
Any, anyone disagree with moving it to twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six? Oh, Trevor.
Not not a disagreement, Jennifer. The only thing, maybe a point clarification, I think the survey will tell us if the user, if the membership would like to see a enclosed facility for tennis. And this would be the spot that made the most sense, given that we already had a plan drawn up in twenty ten for that specific purpose. So potentially it still ties in with what you're saying about getting member feedback. Even if we do find out that that is actually something that our membership wants, we would still need to have direct communication with the user community on what that would look like and and pricing and everything like that. So I agree with you.
Okay, so no other, no objections or comments related to number two? Hey, Mac, you want to start going back to number three?
Yeah, I mean, I, same basic concept on Golf Course Island. I've heard mixed reviews on whether that's something we really ought to be doing right now or not. Um, we're proposing pushing, pushing that back for the same same reasons. I guess I'll just look for head nodding.
I have no objection.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's jump.
I'm sorry, Mac, I have to ask you. So there's no triple R F work required for Golf Course Island next year or last year or the year before or twenty four, twenty five? I mean, here's, I'll try to make some sense out of this. I'm not sure I can. These things have work that needs to be done, maintenance work, okay, under triple R F, okay? And then there's also the concept of, you know, making it better or making it special or all of that. Are we pushing it out because we don't need to do any work on it and there's room to do that? Or are we pushing the maintenance of this out because of a survey or because of some other requirement? This just gets back to the old, you know, my problem of we we stopped doing maintenance almost because we want to do something better. And then stuff gets older and stuff breaks. That that's what I worry about.
You know, on that question, Dave, why don't I have Peter talk to his thoughts and philosophy? I think we have, as an association, done that in the past, what you just described. It is not going to be our intent to not do maintenance that necessary to keep the facility from like collapsing. That that's not the intent. But I'm certain we have probably delayed necessary maintenance in years past because we said, well, let's try to limp to when we make a major decision about a a big upgrade. So so it's really not going to be that.
Okay, good.
So just quickly, there's definitely something to what Mac said about the philosophy that if there's a major capital project coming, we'll delay some sort of maintenance investment because we're going to spend money to spend money. That's that's a capital philosophy that spans every facilities agency in the country. What I'm hearing tonight is particularly exciting to me because there are programs that are standard practice in most organizations called maintenance capital or major maintenance on top of or in excess of capital replacement. When I, when I listen to what's being said tonight, I think part of our plan for next year is to come back with what does maintenance capital look like? Investments that maybe are not in the five hundred thousand dollar range, but keep things running and moving so that we're not running into these issues where things just stop working. You know, I I would like to, we can go back to the Autumn Wood example, although everyone's sick of hearing me talk about Autumn Wood Pool as well. But there are things that happen, I think, every year if we were to look at what maintenance capital looks like. We could invest in facilities, maybe spend down some of the cash conversation that we're having tonight and then look at capital in a different way as well. When we look at, you know, Talots has come up tonight as an example. We could look at two, three, four Talots in one year if we want to spend that kind of money. We're just not prepared right now to have that conversation, but that's definitely where we're headed from a planning perspective. So thank you.
Last one on this page.
The ADA Playground. Um, so this is something that has been bantered about at Friends of Reston at the board meetings recently. And we have been having discussions about going after another major capital campaign. Some of you may recall there was some emails floating around. Um, former director Perry sent around emails around with a a playground of sorts. There was like a two million dollar playground. I'd actually never heard of such a thing, but it was really cool, you know, after I looked at it. I'm not suggesting Friends of Reston is interested necessarily doing that exact idea. But I think they are interested in wanting to do something more for the community than just the scholarships and some of the stuff that they've been funding of late. And they approached us and we have some money set aside, as I mentioned earlier, for the Lake Newport facility. I think the question for the board would be, is there a desire to set aside some money either from triple R F savings from this year, and a lot of that is from fleet and some other things I'll let Pete and Chris speak to, re-prioritize the one hundred and twenty five K. It's not as if the Lake Newport facility is not usable right now. Um, and then, of course, I'll just keep working with Friends of Rest and, you know, in my capacity on their board. So, I mean, they're asking, are we interested in partnering on a project? And it seems to be of interest. Certainly, the community could benefit from such a thing. An inclusive playground, you know, that helps kids, especially those with disabilities, be able to go out and play in our community. This seems to fit all of our, you know, community ideals. I think the question is just where and how on the money. Now, in my experience, if Friends really wants to get involved in a capital campaign or something like that, Now, in my experience, if Friends really wants to get involved in a capital campaign or something like that. That's a pretty attractive project for private companies that want to donate to a 501(c)(3) to help out kids and, you know, in the community like that. So, I mean, I could see this turning into a win-win for RA. I would just want to be clear about what our contribution is from RA versus we dedicate some staff time and help generate some sponsorship dollars, you know, that sort of thing. But anyway, that's, that, that's what we've been talking about. And so I wanted to put that in front of you and see what you thought.
Trevor.
Can anybody clarify from staff what, what the timeline is again for the North Reston facility that Fairfax County would be putting together? And do we have the opportunity to kind of leverage and learn off of that facility about how far our money could go? What we could get for X amount of dollars and any lessons learned on just the, how much the community is using it? That type of, because I think it's obviously a very worthy cause. But if we have an example being laid out before us in Reston, we can learn a lot from it before generating X amount of dollars.
Or did you want to answer?
I just, I was going to ask Chris if he knew the timing.
I mean, I haven't heard anything specific. I mean, even in that Reston Now article that was posted, they don't have a clear timeline of exactly when, but. Perhaps they'd be starting some of the initial legwork in 24. And my gut instinct is telling me they're going through a site plan and it's that kind of money, you know, they're talking about. They're probably not going to have it actually installed until 25 or 26. But I don't have any confirmations written on that side yet.
Well, why wouldn't Friends of Reston work with the county and direct their time, effort and contribution?
The bylaws only allow them to work with us.
Oh, I see. Okay.
I mean, one question becomes if they're going to put in a one and a half million dollar. Facility like that. Why isn't that itself beneficial to us? And why do we have to do our own?
I think the logic there was that they would do one, that theirs is being built on the north side of the town and. The other one, ours was looking at the south Reston.
So my suggestion.
Theirs will be 1.6 and ours will be 400,000. That'll look different.
So my suggestion on this, this one is that we table it and we. We have a more holistic discussion. One is the last time Friends of Reston got a suggestion. They were, they were not happy that the RA board had not approved it, had not vetted it, had not. And I don't want to get ourselves in that situation again. If we're going to go to them, I think that we need to really vet it out and say we would like to partner with Friends of Reston on this. We do have a joint meeting with Friends of Reston once a year. I don't remember. It's usually the fall-ish time. I would be remiss if I didn't say I advocated for an ADA, you know, destination playground in the comp plan. Pretty, you know, hard from a personal perspective. So I am absolutely not against it. I'm for it. But i- is it a playground we do? Is it something else? I think that there needs to be more minds at the table for what is it that Reston? You know, needs that would be appealing to Friends of Reston to provide? And I think it would take too much planning to put in the budget next year and it would just, it's going to take too much time. To plan or to figure out what that is and how to do it to put money in the budget next year.
And this is Lake Newport, which would be right next door to the Home Depot Playground.
Right, so that would likely not happen. We wanted to point out because some of you are very good at looking through every line item in the budget. There is $175,000 in a line item for Lake Newport improvements for this purpose. So that could just stay there and we, I mean, that's very minor, minor improvements. And we just improve the playground there. That's kind of a different concept. But if, from a budgetary standpoint, there was a desire to reallocate or repurpose that to a major ADA playground in the south part of town, for example, that would certainly be out of there.
And you wouldn't have to wait for a formal budget. Year to do that. In other words. Mid-year next year, Friends of Reston come back and they want to do, you could, the board could do something mid-year if they wanted to because the funds. For Lake Newport are sitting there right now. So you could table the rest of it and still get that done with their help without putting in our budget.
Yeah, I mean, I think as we, so we sharpened our pencils a little bit on this and realizing that. We would probably not recommend putting more than this kind of money in just as RA, you know, that, that the money's already there. I think this was more about gauging interest so that we could then, I can carry some messages back and want to, are we interested? Because the money, we have the money, but it's not earmarked for the specific purpose.
But should we be putting money in something like this if the county is putting in a ton of money on our side of town in this? It just seems redundant. Like, we put this in before the county made the decision to. To put in a 1.6 million dollar playground. It almost seems now red, redundant. It almost seems redundant. I don't.
I think Travis' point, probably the key one, and this is a policy issue just for RA. That, it could be viewed as a north side improvement, you know, and how are we, back to our map that shows where all the improvements are going. Are we interested in something meaningful of this size down in the south part?
So to me, that's not a budget. I don't like, I would tee it up to Bach and put it on a board meeting agenda for us to have a discussion on that. I, because we could talk all night about, is it worthy, is it not? What kind of thing is worthy? Where should it be? And I'm not sure that that gets you what you need for the budget. And it's, and we don't, like, we're not going to throw a motion tonight. And I think that this requires a motion based on our conversation with Friends of Reston last year. They want to see board support for. For something before we take it to them and they, yes, please could do it.
I'm, I'm in favor of this collaboration with Friends of Reston, but I think there are too many variables right now. That require a little bit of thinking, coordination, maybe brainstorming and talking to staff and others to get an idea. To Trevor's point, you know, the county is doing something. Is it south? Is the policy issue? Is it a strategic plan issue? But I think those need, well, the short end of it is I favor tabling it for now. Until we understand it better.
We just agree.
We're not ready.
Yeah, we're not ready.
Any objection to tabling this one? Okay.
I think I might posit this slightly differently. We already have the money. We don't need new money and therefore it's not a necessary 24 budget discussion.
Right.
I'll go back and talk to friends about how we might be able to advance the ball.
Right, that would be a great, I think that would be a perfect, a perfect segue.
Okay, so moving along, the next item on our list is the pass sales. So here's what we did and there's a couple pieces of information which we don't have. We can go to the next slide. Chris is actually driving this, so let us, we'll get it figured out in a second. Okay. Our typical expenses budgeted, which mostly year over year come in pretty similar, are about 2.2 million or so. And then, of course, we've. We supplement, so almost 85% of that is covered by the general assessment and then the rest is covered by pass sales. Now, you all may recall last year, we had a discussion and then raised non-member. Fees for the passes fairly substantially. We don't have all of the final data on that because we do see a push in July. So I'm not, we'll have that for you by the time we make some budgetary decisions. The question that's out there though is of that, that $400,000. If we can find a way to build access to aquatics and tennis into the base assessment. What would that look like and how does it affect the budget? Now, y'all recall, we talked about this in May. We talked about the value systems that go with such a decision. That a lot of HOAs allow people to use the facilities. Not private lessons, not the private parties, you know, the things that are kind of add-ons or cost center things. But just simply going in, you know, during open hours. So what we did was take a look at two different scenarios that we, we could potentially continue to, to price out. So what we would have to do is find $400,000, that, and I'll come to a caveat for that in a minute. That $400,000 represents the delta between monies that the general assessment covers and the operating expenses. That number, as we look at it right now, is pretty close. The actuals for what we sold in passes, we think is going to be pretty much right on that number. So that's a pretty good number for us to use. That number represents about $18 on the assessment. So you all may recall a question came up about what some folks call a bleed-in strategy. So you don't just bill everybody 18 bucks right out of the chute. What if we did it one-third, one-third, one-third? That's just something I threw out there. What would that look like? It's about a $6 assessment hit and we would use one-time surplus cash. To make up the difference in year one and two and then at the, and third budget cycle. Of course, we've caught up the full assessment hit. Now, a question would come up about, well, how do we account for non-assessment revenue? Because if we give access to members, we'd still obviously be charging non-members. A rate, you know, to be able to access that. I'm still working with Laura and the team on what that non-assessment revenue, the actual looked like for this year. What we do know is that we had less people buy passes for non-members. But we think it's actually, we charge them a lot more. So the total revenue is, we think, going to be pretty close to what we collected last year in actual, just with less people. So we're still working on some conclusions for you all about the elasticity of that demand. Nonetheless, it doesn't necessarily have to be an $18 hit. I mean, there, there would be a revenue from non-assessment. Collection of some kind because that demand's not going away, right? I was simply trying to give simple math so we could continue this dialogue and see if there's interest in pursuing this, get into the budgetary discussion. So those are really the questions. Should I continue to sharpen my pencil and look at bringing this forward? I actually think I'll just offer it's a really good idea if there's a way we can get there and everybody's comfortable with it. I know I was very surprised when I got here and found out that, you know, you were paying as members 85% of the cost of the pools and you can't use them. That to me, and I know people say, well, the users of the pool should pay. But our cost center is not even close to that. There is no revenue model where only users of the pools are going to pay for the operation of the pool. I see it in the inverse, but maybe I'm too close to it too. Anyways, I think that's a significant thing that we would be able to show the membership value in your base assessment if you're able to use more of the facilities than you can today. So anyways, the question out there is, should we continue to price this out and bring it back?
Do you think that doing this would increase the amount of participation by our own members in these facilities? That is, it would induce people who don't now participate to participate?
Yeah, it's a good question. We think, we think that's true and we think that's a good thing. Because the casual user that may not be willing to go pay for a pass, let's say for the whole summer. But now it's free and it's really hot in July. They're going to go try. They're going to come out and the kids will see other kids. In fact, if anything, Peter and I talked about, well, what happens if we get too many people? Like, we're nowhere near capacity a lot now. What happens if we get a lot of people? And for me, that sounds like a really good problem to have. We get a lot of people interacting with each other, you know?
And also, it would be an inducement to people who are tight on money. To go ahead and participate where they're not doing. Because this would be considered a luxury for them.
If you consider a family of four, if they were renewing, their passes would cost 100 bucks. 1850 is like, okay, that's a, that's a good deal.
Yeah.
So I just want to watch our time because we're over already. And these are great comments and great discussions and I will stay here until 2 AM as you all know, because I'm, I'm the one that throws the motions to extend meetings. But I know that people do not like to spend a lot of time. So I want to be cognizant of balancing here. And I want to start asking things like, does anyone object to, to Mac continuing to pursue the idea of adding the assessment? Or adding the fees into the assessment?
Go for it.
Go for it.
Great.
The second part of that was the cash on hand to buy down the assessment. Is that something that we're sold on or do we have comment? Okay, we have comments on that one. Go ahead.
I need to go back to your previous comment because I do have a problem with it actually. Okay, so I, but I'll throw it out there. I mean, it can certainly continue. I mean, that's a board vote, okay? It comes down to, how many pools do you need? Do we know at this point? I mean, three years ago, we did a big exercise in use of pools and how it's falling, falling, falling. And, you know, it is the most expensive amenity we have, not just to build, but to every year spend. I don't know if we know enough about the cost, okay? The cost keeps going up, okay? For the last three years, it's gone up, up, up. Yet two pools are closed each year. I think we need to know more before we simply pull it in. Okay, I'm not against pulling it in. I think I'm going to be, try to be consistent here with things I've said to Mac in the past. I think it's a good idea to pull it in. I'm not sure we're ready. We have this customer survey that's going to have all kinds of stuff coming out about pools. You know, maybe we need to understand that. So I'll throw out a couple of suggestions, okay? Is to think about things. Last year, we increased the non-member fees. We also increased the member fees. What we did is we took away their discount.
Right.
Okay. We could look at things like lower the member fee next year. We could look at something like, why do we charge children a fee? Why don't we let households bring their children for nothing? But we don't, we charge them for that. Maybe members ought to be able to get a guest pass. Right now, they can get one per household. They can get others, but you got to pay for more. Maybe we ought to let them, meaning give members some benefit. But ease our way in, do our customer survey, spend some time. How many pools do we need? Do we need 15? I mean, maybe we need 20, but I, but do we need 15? I'm just not sure we know enough to just say. Because once you do the $6 of the 18. You're going to do the other 12. You can't stop pouring that bottle. I mean, and once you start, you're done. And I'm just saying.
So I think what Dave is.
Let's look at it and make sure we're doing it.
And I see you, Trevor and Laurie. I think what David's suggestion is kind of Travis's approach from earlier, which is maybe there's a menu of options that we ask staff to bring. And. How do you guys feel about that approach?
I think the cash buy-down, I think we need to get away from that initially. Because we're already unusually deflated because of our 1.9 million this year and 2 million in there because of the capex. So I would like to see the budget where you, if you're, whatever the menu options are, I would just like to see a budget without supposing using any excess, excess cash. That gives us time to have excess cash conversations and define it and just like, let's look what the assessment is on doing all these things without this artificial buy-down. Buy-down of it.
Being included in the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing is that we haven't touched upon yet, but we have talked about, I think, in the main meeting was non-member fees. I cannot use the pool unless I pay $800. I'm a member. It costs me my 760 fee plus my $40 for my family. Why in the world does a non-member get to use the pool for a fraction of what I get to, I have to pay to use the pool? There is no math that that makes any sense. No other association charges non-members less than members. My membership fee to use the pool to walk into Glade is $800. And I think that really needs to be the beginning of the conversation of non-member fees. It can be an all-access pass. You can give them the tennis courts, give them whatever. But the fact that we are charging non-members less than what it costs me as a member to walk in and use the pool with my family, it just not making any sense to me.
So Laurie and then Trevor after.
My only comment is brief that I thought we were just deciding tonight that we want Mac to collect the numbers. We're not making a decision. On spending the money. And so I, I do favor collecting numbers related to a menu of options if that's doable. But we're not, this is not a decision on how we're spending the money. That's all.
Trevor, your turn.
Sorry, I missed much of what I wanted to say, but I'll also agree with Lisa in the idea of the value of our assessments. The 6%, the $6 increase over the course of three years to then provide 100% access to pools and recreation, you know, the tennis facilities. Just seems like it's a. A pretty obvious value increase for our, for our community, for our membership. So I'm in favor of additional study as well.
Does that help you?
Yeah, that's perfect. I'll just offer for the simplistic way we were trying to bring this to you. Well, there's a lot of variables that could lower the expense side. This was kind of assuming if we want to keep the same operating rules we are right now, this is what it would take. So I'll go sharpen my pencil and look at some of that. And there's no doubt in my mind that coming out of the community survey, some of the things that Dave and Lisa are throwing out there will come up as policy choices. The board will have to decide. We have 15 swimming pools and there's, no one would draw that model up as a business model today. But we do own 15 pools and a lot of people like their neighborhood pool. I mean, there's a lot that goes into that too. And it is kind of nice to see, as I drive around the community, kids walking to the pool, you know, in the summertime. So, but yes, I will definitely look at ways that this could be accomplished from a numbers standpoint and be ready to show you all that when we get there. Okay, jumping to the, the last topic. And as I just threw out an item around using cash to buy down, I almost feel like I should hide from Lisa. I, I have been loud since I've been here. I'm very concerned about the, the buy-down, just the. I'm very concerned about the, the buy-down, just the, the culture of the buy-down. I think we've artificially masked the true cost of providing service, and most of those services are, they're not seen on a daily basis. All the maintenance services, all of the people out on the trail system, you know, getting debris out of the way, all these different things. I mean, people see the things that are public facing, but their 760, which really should have been 815.
Yes.
They don't, they don't know what all that goes for. I think we need to get away from that, you know, in a big way. So that, that was a million dollars from last year, that if we were fully staffed and a few other things had happened, we would probably have a problem right now. So that's something, unless there's, I haven't heard any dissension that that's something I really ought to be taking a look at from anybody. I'm going to assume that, I think, going in, because I don't think anybody wants to intentionally run a deficit and bank on having positive cash flow the next year to make it okay. I think the thing that I really wanted to hit tonight, though, was the issue around the value and the current assessment. As a board and myself, we have not talked at all about, should I be looking at a contraction budget or something that is really a status quo, or status quo plus inflation only? And I'm raising the issue because it came up last year. And admittedly, last year, I'd been here for all of 45 days, but it did come up really late in the game, and I just, it would not have made sense after 10 meetings to then do it at that time. So I think we have a very deliberate budget process in place that is service-oriented and the things that people are asking for us to evaluate, which includes, are we as efficient as we could be in certain cost centers, particularly with the staffing model? So that's all already baked in to our analysis that you'll see in the first budget. But I would like to know if there's a desire to show what it would take to keep the assessment constant at 760. I will have to start putting pen to paper on what that would look like. And it's deliberate, especially, many of our services, we have one person do it. So if you cut the service, that has an obvious impact. Now, there's some things, you can go from a level of service 10 to a level of service 8. We could all talk about how the community, you don't see that until year five, especially lawn mowing. Like, it's all fine until it's not, when people realize, wait a minute, it used to look so much nicer here in Reston. You know, so there's ways to do stuff like that. But if all of a sudden, you know, in order to find that money, we're no longer doing pick a thing, you know, I would have to help you all identify those things, if that's the direction you want to go. So mostly, I just want to know, is there a desire for me to start doing that? Because otherwise, I've been totally focused on, like, the last three and a half hours of discussion so far.
I'll be the only one to speak up. I think there is value in looking at a 763 budget. Again, I'm the finest guy, unfortunately, okay? And I'm not, I'm not, I don't know how hard it will be for your team to do that necessarily, but, you know, I think it's good to know that, you know, if we held this, what does it mean? There must be, pick a number, three or four items that it would take you to get there. And you'd say, here are the three or four items that we would have to do. There are a lot of members, certainly who talk to me, because, you know, they get wind of, you know, that I sit on a committee and then they, you know, I get an earful, okay? But when we underspend every year, every year, every year, and then we say, if you want me to do a budget that's at the same number, I got to cut services, it doesn't fit in people who don't know, you know, they don't see what's going on, okay? It just doesn't fit. And so I think if there's a value to the members to understand what, what it would take to get there. Again, I don't know how much work that means for your team, Mac, but I think there's value to the community in that exercise.
Bob, can I, Mac, can I get a clarification on your question? I got a little bit confused. I thought you were talking about whether to use this $1 million to keep the number at the same, wasn't that?
No, it's two, two questions. I sort of presumed, no one likes running a deficit, so I thought I had not, yeah, let's not intentionally run a deficit and use cash. That's a common theme that's been coming up. Question two was, should we look at a, at not increasing the assessment at all and what it would take to do that?
Can he put together a budget that's at 763?
So. So I.
Just our current.
Yeah, I know, I, listen, I know I'm new to the board, but I have major problems with that, because I think it's a cultural thing. You can't keep doing that all the time. Two years ago, when I went to Safeway, the watermelon was $4.99. Now it's $10.99. I think we're fooling ourselves by just artificially keeping it at that level by playing these games, you know, a million here and that, this, that, and so on. And we can show, well, yeah, if I keep it at this number, these are the services that I have to cut, but I think it's sort of, it just doesn't drive.
The problem is, though, you haven't told us what the assessment should have been for 2023 based on the forecast.
Maybe that's the problem.
I would like to know what that number is. Because 763 is going to be an increase in budget over what the spend rate is for 2023. So.
816.
We're, we're.
No, no.
That's a different.
They're over, they're under budget.
We do, we do have a forecast, though, that's the problem.
We have a forecast. So, so I think, I think it's a two-part question before we answer that, and we need to know what the assessment, if the assessment is based on the current forecast, what would the assessment should have been set at for 2023? And that's the conversation that makes more sense.
Well, let me just jump in, Travis, because I think that the only flaw in that, Lisa, is we've had tremendous attrition on the staff with big, big number staff folks, and the 22 attrition didn't include the CEO. So you're seeing these enormous variances in actuals that presumably, if we want to be in certain businesses, for example, like the environmental director, I mean, we're showing hundreds of thousands of dollars that look like an enormous delta, which would hit the assessment to the tune of 10, 15, 20 bucks.
If we haven't had that role filled, right, so status quo, see, 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 because that's the whole thing. If we are under because we haven't been providing services, it's not, that's not a cut in service. We've never provided the services. So I really think we need to look at, and I haven't seen, there, I have not seen any numbers that allow me to look at it, because our, our surplus varied significantly between, like, April and May. We lost a million dollars and there was a timing difference or whatnot. I don't have a good visibility with the numbers that have been available to me to just know how on the mark or off the mark was our assessment for 2023. And then you can, you can say that, look, it's showing that the assessment should have been, we bought down, we did all this. Look, the assessment should have been 760 for 2023. Do you want me, that was with all the espendes, that's with all this, we're going to hire these two positions, so a status quo budget would be 750 or something, 70. I don't know what the numbers are, because we don't have that available to us, but that's, that's, that's the, that's the budget based on just the surplus numbers we were seeing in the first half of the year.
And I'm going to build on, maybe, if I understand what your position properly, and then, you know, speak from the point of view of the random person who talks today. I'm not, I'm still not sure how I follow that we have artificially deflated the assessment, but we've assessed, also assessed too much and built our cash reserves up over X number of years. I'm not sure how, how they correlate.
We have two surpluses. So we have an operational surplus, where we're not sending the assessment that was set aside for operations. And then we have a secondary surplus, because we're not spending the money that all the capex keeps on moving out, and so we're not spending capex. We have two surpluses going on in the budget.
So, so I, what I guess I'm not understanding is then, is how we're artificially deflating when we're not spending the money that we're.
We might not have been. That's what, that's why we don't have the number. We need the, we need, we need the number.
We, we, we built the budget based on hiring all the positions that were approved, or at least most of them, okay? And we had trouble doing that. We couldn't fill positions.
And that was last year.
This was for '23.
And the year before.
And the year before.
In '21 and '22 and '19.
Most years.
And now I understand.
So, right, we approved positions, we budget for them, as we should.
Yeah.
But then we can't seem to keep them, and we're under. And, but we had to, we have to fill the gap with cash the last couple of years to do that.
So.
We should, by the way, we should never do buy downs again.
So we were doing assessments based on, based on the idea that all of the, that we would have 100% staff. And we did not.
And we added a conservative factor, and we still.
But we, we just need to know if that, if that, if the 2023, just based on the forecast, would have been 810, would have been 775, would have been 760. I, I think we just have to know that number.
Well, if you take the million and divide it by the numbers.
It would have come back down to 763.
Forty, forty dollars or something.
Yeah, 763.
It would have started at 815, the million that we have surplus would have brought it down to 763. Somewhere around there, anyway.
A little bit less, because of the years on halfway for.
Laurie has a question.
Oh, sorry, Laurie. Yes. You're on mute, sorry.
Sorry, I was muted. Excuse me. I'm hearing Lisa say we need to look back at 2023 to see where the assessment should have been. I don't think, I don't see the value in that. We know that in 2023, there were positions that went unfilled, and so that is an unusual circumstance. So I think we need to continue to maybe adjust our projections, but I don't see the value in looking back at what we think the assessment maybe should have been had we not done X, Y, or Z. I don't see the value of the look back at this point. I'm not a finance person, so maybe that's why I don't see it.
I think what Tom has just said is that he believes that the assessment, without a buyback, we didn't use the 1 million surplus. The assessment calculates to 763 for 2023.
Or around there, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we never really utilized. We approved to utilize a $1 million surplus to hit that, because it was originally 816, that's what the budget was set for, but our spend only calculates to 763.
And, and I think, to Laurie's point, the only reason we're debating this, I guess, okay, is that, is it appropriate to ask Mac and his team to go and look at a budget proposal that holds 763? Maybe it isn't, okay? I mean, but I think that's where it started, because we're saying, gee, if prior years was less than that, then maybe 763 is doable, maybe it isn't.
I think the, the issue with building a budget that has a status quo, you still have to make assumptions, you're going to have to assume the staff positions are filled or almost all of them. And I think the rea, the reason the delta has been so big and why these questions coming up is the nature of the positions that have been vacant. We've been vacant at least two and as many as four SLT positions for like four or five years running. That's wildly different than if we see attrition in some of our other positions. Now, the other piece from an operating surplus standpoint is, we're going to be truing up some of the revenue numbers and the expense numbers. We believe there's some, some business models that, that makes that make sense. So there's going to be some of that truing up that's going to occur, too, which will address the overall surplus. To, to get into a 763, or just let's call it a status quo budget, if you make some of those assumptions, it is more expensive to do the same thing, right? Inflation happens. So by definition, just to make up whatever that percentage is, and Tom and I are working on that number right now, something has to give somewhere in there. So, I mean, and I can start working on that, I just don't want to do it in October and November, because, and it came up last time, and there's some reasons to maybe talk about that. What I perceive is everybody keep talking about what they want to add, not, should we be minimalist and looking at cutting? I mean, that's the real value-based question in thinking about a status quo or a smaller budget.
I think, I think the real issue with hold, with coming up with a budget to, to, to keep the assessment the same is not for this group, it's to answer questions from the members.
Right.
Yes.
That's, that's my feeling as well. It's, it's making sure that we can answer questions.
Answer those questions, yes.
Yeah, we looked at that, and you know what? It can't be done, and here's, I mean, knowing the kinds of things that we'd have to cut, but just writing it off as, it can't be done, is a tough answer.
No, no, no. I mean, if there's a desire to say, in order to do this, these are the kinds of things that would need to be cut, so that that question can be asked and answered, sure. That, that, that's easier than building a budget and deciding which limb is more important than the other.
But I think what we've just said over the last few minutes is that the baseline is not 763. You can never achieve 763, because we had a 1 million surplus because of staffing positions. So assuming those staffing positions that were open are going into 2024 filled, then is the baseline budget that Dave, you said you wanted to, is it 816? You can't go back to 763.
Oh, I agree.
816.
I agree. I agree, absolutely.
Yeah. So maybe the ask Mac is, do you need to build a budget that gets us to 816?
Right.
Or is it going to be 850?
My comment is, yes, I would like you to do this. I, I voted yes, you know, I voted yes last year when there was a motion, but I will tell you, I don't see it as a true just service cut. What do we need to cut? I think there are things that are in the budget that we're not, it's not just staff. There are other things that we're not using, and I think the exercise puts not only the board, as Bob and David said, in a position to explain to members what is important, but it also sets us all through an exercise of, do we still need this item? Is this still of value to us? Have we used it this, the last three years, and should we continue to put it in the budget? So you either get there by starting with a zero-based budget exercise, or you say, here's, we're going to start with last year's budget, and we're going to figure out, you know, what, what other things could be cut to potentially stay where we are. So I've always found value in it, but I also go through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, and I, like, there are areas, because I've thrown many motions at board meetings, that probably scare a lot of board members, like, let's increase the revenue line item on this, or let's decrease the expense. But I think it's because I see it year after year after year of we are either not spending or we're under-budgeting revenue. So I don't see it as a one-for-one service cut exercise.
What's the material amount? Because a million dollars is about $47 in the assessment.
I'm not sure we can crank out the numbers quick enough to figure.
Well, I, I just want to put perspective on it. So like, if you, if you were trying to cut $47 out of the budget, which is like 800 and 763, right, or 816, so you have to cut a million dollars out just to get to 763.
If you don't want to use the buy-down.
We went two years ago from zero conservative factor in the staffing line.
Yeah.
To 250, and we're still needing that.
Yeah.
So there are, there are other ways and other tools that I think that Mac could use by trending out what are staff spending, because I think staff sometimes gets very anxious, saying, don't cut it, I need it. And there are areas where he could put in conservative factors, and they still see or feel like they have their budget money, but he knows that over time, it hasn't been spent, so I'm going to go ahead and bank on, take a bet, that we're not going to spend it next year, or that we're going to bring in more revenue than staffing.
Right. In a, in a professional services organization, which is kind of like what this is, let's just say, you, you have people and you have stuff, right? Everything falls into people and stuff. If we were to look at the stuff budget, how many millions of dollars of stuff is the assessment dollars? Just for perspective, because you could spend a lot of time doing a lot of this.
Two and a half million dollars.
So two and a half million, million dollars. So you're, you're only going to get a couple of dollars of assessment. A couple of dollars. If you go through this huge exercise of just the stuff, the impact is going to be very small. I'm just going to put that out there. They, they could go through all that and cut it, but it's going to be miniscule. It won't be impactful at all to the assessment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there is a, there is the project that's, that can have an impact, and that's the credit card project. That's going to be a factor that can go along, not a long way, but it's, it's, it's a $10 item on the, on the, on the fee. And we need to know that by September, or we won't have enough time to do communications.
So that's, that's one line item that has huge impact, right? So if, rather than, and, and to Mac's point, right, he doesn't want to get into October, and then someone says, get me a 763 budget, because that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. and then someone says, get me a 763 budget, because that doesn't make any sense. But also, doing all the work and effort to cut $2 off the assessment, or $3 off the assessment, is not, there's probably not a lot of value on it. So I think we really need to dig in and just look at, okay, what are the big macro items that could have impact? And the credit card fee is a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think, right?
I think so.
250.
Hundred and fifty.
250.
250. So like, if you spend all that time and energy just getting that implemented finally, after waiting three years for it, like, that's huge, it's impactful, it's a win, it almost wipes out most of your problems with the pool fees. Like, you could do a lot with something like that. So I think maybe, rather than asking management to come to 763, I think there's not going to be a tolerance for it to be $900, the assessment. There's zero tolerance of that, but I feel like we have, maybe give some guidance on tolerance levels, because I don't think, 763 is just not going to, it's not going to make sense. I'm just, we're starting at 816 per Mac today. So like, if a board member sitting here and cannot digest 816, speak up now. Because like, the status quo is 816 without anything. So we're already looking at going up from 816. The starting point is probably 825 or something like that.
I am not tolerant of 816, but it's because I think that there's some padding in there.
But on people or stuff? Like, because that's the...
On both.
Well, I mean, I think that...
But on the people's side, there's more.
Mac is doing his work on the people's side, which of course is our biggest single cost factor, is people, obviously. And, I mean, that is a place where if you go through that and say, I mean, we've been running, what, 10 to 15 people under the budget last year? And you're right, there's several of those that are very high-level positions that have been missing for several years. But do we need all 15? You know, what services aren't getting done? You know, what didn't happen in '23 that should have happened if we had had a few of those? So does it 15? Can that be small? I don't know. I mean, that's a place where maybe, you know, but that's work you're doing, I believe. So that's going to come out in the first draft anyway, right? So, yeah. I'm not sure there's a number you have to go to, other than the number you think you need to get to, but I think there will be some questions in September that say, okay, how do we kind of get back to, whether it's 816 or whatever, but, you know, making sure that we're paying attention to getting things at least looked at.
Mac, I think maybe we're looking at the menu option again. Thinking about the table, and you lay it out, all your line items, and then at the 763 budget, and just throwing out the number there. 763, 820, again, just a random number, and 850, you know, just to get a high, moderate low. And then we can pick and choose from there.
Yeah, I think, just, I probably should have started this. I believe Jennifer to be right. There's some things that need truing up. So I use the term "truing up." I think we have been outperforming revenue in some situations that we should be building appropriately in. When I took a look at the status quo budget, when I thought we were going to produce that, you know, in like 26 days, when you have an organization that's almost entirely staff, to find a million dollars is going to involve bodies. It's going to at some level. It's not entirely bodies. I 100% agree with that. But to say it has, there's a scenario, I could not identify that scenario a year ago. So I can certainly have an explanation of why, or what it would cost to try to keep the assessment low, but it definitely involves service reduction of some kind. To not, I mean, just inflation alone is a big enough number.
Or close pools. We didn't even talk about that, but it's, it's yin and yang. You can't, it's a holistic problem.
This is true. If the desire was to keep the assessment static, I think the point I'm raising in the budget study session is, all we've been talking about is what new services do we want to add? What services do we want to enhance or improve? How do we want to make sure that we're keeping the same level of service in certain areas, especially if there's a perception it's dropped off, or we're not getting enough out of it? Those are the kinds of conversations we've had. Not, is there a way to cut expenditures because we want to keep the assessment static? That's a very different conversation. So I think what I'm looking for, what I will be doing in any scenario, is building a CEO budget that I think is best for the association. If the board would like an alternate budget that shows what it would take to not increase the assessment, and it's got a menu of options, I can start working on that. It's just not, it's not the budget I would propose to you, but it's certainly a good exercise for all the reasons you're asking for. But it does take time, too, and time away from other things. So I deliberately, if you want that, I will need some time to work on it.
Okay. So do, so, because we're, do you guys want the menu of options? Or do you want a CEO budget that Mac believes is what he needs to bring to us? What are...
Well, I believe that what we need is a CEO budget that has options in it.
So the menu.
I didn't use the word menu, but it should have options in it. Because you can't just say, here it is, you've got to have your plus 5%, minus 5%, and these services are, that, this number goes with this. If I want to get to this number, this is what it costs. And I'm staying away from keeping it the same, just not using that verb. But I expect you to give us a budget and say, here's what it is, and here are the options.
Perhaps another way to look at it is, everybody, the members are saying, ah, 763. So to go beyond 763, we have to justify it. And whatever budget you produce should have clear justifications for going above that 763. And that may mean, well, we're adding this service, we're doing this, we have added this, whatever it is. But it has to be a clear justification and differentiation from the 763.
Great setup, sir. Menu option. Just justify what you have.
Do you feel like you have enough?
Bring the budget. Tell us what.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm planning on doing. The single hardest nut to crack is the million dollars, because it really should have been 816. It's not, because for all kinds of reasons, you all remember from the last meeting, we decided that was not palatable, and so the number became 763. Now, as I true that up, we're going to find money, you know, and some of that, it's not really truly the $50 hit that it sounds like, because the budget, I think, will be more realistic, but it's not going to find 50 bucks. You know, so in that scenario, I have to find that money, you know, as well, as compared to just balancing any new expenditures with cuts in other areas and that sort of thing.
What's the typical assessment increase?
We've got a slide in your packet that shows that, and it...
But focusing at the macro level, right? Because to send a first wave, we keep on growing, growing, growing all the time.
3.2% since 2000.
Part of the budget process is also like, looking at the facilities, right?
3.2.
Looking at the facilities, right? And saying, okay, our long-term goal is to cut our facilities' costs by 20%, because we could do that by taking smaller space. We could do it by taking different space in Ruston. Like, that, that has a lot of value. And it's like, okay, if our facilities' cost, like, when is our lease up on here? I forget.
30.
Okay, so it's coming up in seven years, right? So it's a while out. But let's look at the big decisions that have long-term implications on it, and kind of dig into what is the plan to normalize, or does it? Because to Jennifer's point, I think we feel like we've put a lot of stuff in the organization, and now you're kind of reorganizing everything now that you're coming in here and streamlining it. So it's kind of like the streamlining plus some long-term value. I think all those things need to be in the what-if scenarios, and we've never seen a what-if scenario. Because how, how many dollars of our assessment goes to triple RF?
19.7%.
19%? So like, $140 or more? $160 or more?
One of the last couple.
So like, so if you look at that, we've never looked at the assessments, like, guys, just so you kind of understand the impact of this, if we closed one pool and took out the staffing costs for it, and took it out of triple RF, what impact does that have to the assessment? We don't have to present scenarios that are real for maintaining the things, but nobody has ever been presented, like, let's just open the board's eyes to all, like, all the decisions that we're making. Like, you know, we're looking at the operating costs, we're looking at all these things. They all add up. That's all I'm saying, is if we can take it to that macro level and look at things that are high-dollar impact to the overall thing, and, you know, 5% higher is impactful.
So maybe just to put a bow on this, I, Lisa's right, there are some things that I am taking as assumptions at this point in time, because there are significant value judgments in, should we be looking at a budget that contemplates closing pools? And I'm going to pick and propose one in a budget with no board discussion? Like, those are, even though it's a budgetary thing, it's really not. It's a major vision policy thing. I'm building that into our strategic planning conversation to try to get a better sense of where those swim boundaries are. The interesting thing is, I will attend meetings, and I'll attend meetings with people in this room, and I will hear, we are a resort community, and you've got to start thinking about resort community and putting in nothing but resort amenities. No, 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 we are a basic-level HOA, and we should be thinking of ourselves like that. And from a budgetary standpoint, the North Star is kind of like that. So as we hone in, I think, and really with the board, it'll give better guidance. I think you're asking very good questions, just from a CEO standpoint. Before I was to take on, hey, you know what? I could probably find the money if I just said, we're closing Lake Newport Pool and Glade next year. Everybody okay with that? You know, it would just get all kind of crazy.
Hold on. Yeah, don't, if you say pools, say it generically. We've learned that lesson, hopefully. Trevor, your turn.
Yeah, this is, again, I don't want to take away from the discussion, it's slightly off-topic, but I do believe that maybe we should start our conversations in future years with this assessment, maybe in the beginning, because it's, I find it somewhat interesting how the idea of pool closures and service cutbacks were discussed in topic one, and they were shot down pretty hard. And now here we are, talking about closing pools at 10 o'clock at night, right? So if, when we actually talk about the money at the end of the day, and what we're going to have to stand by to our members, and we put that out in an assessment number, it becomes a lot more real. And so when you start with that upfront, and you start to get a mentality as a board or as a committee here about what we are comfortable doing, and what we want, what our vision is from an assessment standpoint, it's going to impact what we want staff to actually look at and feel. So it was all fun and games in the beginning, and now that we're talking about the real hard money that we have to go back.
Just to clarify, at the beginning, we were talking about the assumptions for the CEO budget. So not close everything and having everything open was the assumptions that they're building the CEO budget. And so now the question is, is there an alternative to the CEO budget? What that alternative is? I just want to clarify, because it didn't seem like that was clear.
Any other, I think, Mac, you feel like you have what you need on this one?
Yep.
Okay.
What makes the conversation, so I'll keep it short. What makes the conversation so hard is these buy downs. And this is what we've got to stop doing, okay? All of this conversation for the last 20 minutes would be so different if there wasn't a million-dollar hit, okay, put in there last year, because we don't communicate that to members.
That's right. They don't, they only...
Okay? So this is why they come back, oh, 763 is going to go to 850. What the, no, 816 is going to 850. So I'm just, we can't undo it now, but we can get a lot better going forward to not do stuff like that, and make sure that we're communicating what it costs to run the business. So, you know, we should see the CEO's budget. But I do like the idea of being able to, you know, see an up or down is going to be very helpful, because we're going to push on it in different ways to see, and maybe we push up, too. You know, it works both ways.
And in order to do that, you really have to dig in and make hard decisions. It's just much easier for a board to say, oh, we have surplus in cash, we'll deflate the budget. And we could have cut line items and still got to 760.
But we really need to be thinking about it in chunks of over $100,000. Like, I'm just kind of, like, you're looking at a million-dollar difference, right? So we know the credit cards is 150, because it's not about like, hey, we're not going to do all this new stuff, because some of this new stuff might have a lot more value than some of the old stuff that we're doing. So it's not about like, okay, don't do all this new stuff. It's about, okay, we want to do this new stuff, so are there trade-offs of equal value of $100,000, $200,000 that we can do?
We can look at. Yeah. Any other budget session topics for the good of the evening? Well, thank you, Mac, and the rest of your team for putting all of this together. Hopefully, we've given some insights, and I'm sure you'll be back to let us know if you need some more. And thank you all for taking the time to have such a really thoughtful conversation. Laurie, I see your hand up.
Just a quick comment to thank you all for accommodating Trevor and me, who are not on site. I'm going to try to be on-site for future meetings, but it really is helpful to have you all using your mics and including us in the conversation. Thank you.
Well, without any further business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.